Mayor Brian, so my name is Dina Ramos. I am the president and founder of the Hispanic Organizations Network and also the Clearwater Hispanic Farmers Market. And thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to be here today. Thank you for all of you for recognizing in this important moment to acknowledge the Hispanic and Latino communities in Pinellas County in Clearwater. And so I just wanted to say especially thank you to Ms. Kathleen Beckman and Mark Bunker and for all of your support and your encouragement. Thank you, guys. And so I also would love to recognize this many names. So I'm just going to attempt to to mention Andrea Vendetti, of course, the senior program manager for Clearwater Hispanic Outreach Center. Also Juan Vasquez, he is the president of the Federation of the Idalguenses. Mr. Juan. And Cecilia Perez, she's the president of Unimax. And Maria Pepe, she's the community engagement director for Sun Coast Hospice in Path Health. And Pastor Kathleen Peck, she is the pastor of Flowing River Church and also founder of the Healing House, amazing place. Eliseo Santana couldn't be here. She is in Florida Lulac. He's an amazing, but he's in Washington DC. Meri Pioquinto has been working tirelessly, many, many years, in Florida, in Pinellas County. And also Orlan Mesquite, he's the president of North Southern Avenue and Residence Associations. And he's also the volunteer of the Hispanic Outreach Center and also for the Clearwater Hispanic Farmers Market. We want to welcome all of you. I mean, there's little leagues, coaches, business owners, entrepreneurs, investors, this community leaders, all of them in their own right. And so I present them to you. And we all are extremely thankful to all of you and honored to be part of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I wanted to mention one more thing is that we have Xcamilpan as our sister city now for this Hispanic Heritage Month. So congratulations on that as well.
Okay, if we could have Tara Kivitt and Marina Sangranas, please come forward for United Way proclamation, our city representatives. Whereas the United Way Sun Coast is dedicated to changing lives and building futures by working with many partners to make a difference in what matters in the community. And whereas the city of Clearwater has been an outstanding contributor towards the efforts of the United Way by working together to increase community awareness and empowering employees to make a difference in the lives of those in need through financial investments and volunteer involvement. And whereas the city of Clearwater continues to encourage and to support the efforts of the United Way Sun Coast, which provides funding for programs of more than 70 agencies in the Tampa Bay area, including right here in our community. And whereas employees of the city of Clearwater have contributed over $1.3 million through personal payroll deductions and contributions to the United Way Sun Coast and their local community strategic partners. Now therefore, I Brian Onks, mayor of the city of Clearwater, Florida, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim October 1st through October 31st, 2023 to be United Way Month in the city of Clearwater.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. My name is Trina Oy. I'm a corporate philanthropy manager with United Way Sun Coast, here to accept the proclamation. Thank you again. The city of Clearwater has been an amazing partner for us. And like Mayor Onks mentioned, you all have raised over $1.3 million since we've been tracking the data in 2003. And we are about to celebrate our centennial anniversary next year. So 100 years of United Way, providing programs and services to the community. And we cannot do it without your support. So thank you all so much. We appreciate it.
And I'm Tara Kivitt, city engineer. But I wanted to introduce Marina Sangranas. She is a contract and procurement specialist in public works engineering. And she has taken on the responsibility to be the citywide United Way coordinator. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate all the employees and the hard work goes into raising money for those in need. Thank you for your efforts. Okay, if we can have Brian Langle from Clearwater Gas come forward for Nat Public Natural Gas Week proclamation. Whereas there are approximately 1,000 publicly owned natural gas systems in the United States serving more than 6 million customers. Whereas the city of Clearwater has owned and operated Clearwater Gas since 1924. Whereas Clearwater Gas provides safe, economical, and reliable natural gas that is domestically produced. And whereas Clearwater Gas System provides vehicle fuel through the city-owned compressed natural gas fueling station. And whereas natural gas is a preferred energy source by many homeowners and businesses and stimulates economic growth for the local economy. Now therefore, I Brian Onks, Senior Mayor of the city of Clearwater, Florida, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim October 1st through the 7th, 2023 to be Public Natural Gas Week in Clearwater.
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I'm Brian Langle, Executive Director for Clearwater Gas System. So this week, we've been celebrating our employees on all the things that, all the great things that they do for our communities and serve natural gas in all those 20 cities and two counties that we serve in Pinellas and Pasco County. We also are going to be celebrating our 100th anniversary next year as we were born in 1924. So we'll be having a lot of different festivities in 2024 to celebrate those things. So there'll be more to come on that next year. And also like to just add that, you know, Clearwater Gas System does contribute a lot to the local economy with our jobs and our dividend payment to the city that helps reduce the milit rate for our Clearwater citizens as well. So I just wanted to point that out and that we are experiencing a lot of changes in the industries, as you all know, and that we are adapting to those. And, you know, so that way we become resilient and continue to provide a safe and valuable commodity to our customers.
Okay, our final proclamation of the evening. If we could have James Warmen, Fire Marshal for the city of Clearwater, please step forward for the Fire Prevention Week proclamation. Whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention, effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us the time to get out safely. And whereas according to the National Fire Prevention Association, cooking is the primary cause of home fires and home fire injuries, while smoking was the leading cause of home fire deaths. And whereas most home fires and fire casualties result from five causes: cooking, heating, electrical distribution and lighting equipment, intentional fire setting and smoking materials. And whereas having working smoke alarms in homes is a critical element of home fire safety. Whereas the city of Clearwater residents should install a minimum of smoke alarms in every sleeping room outside each separate sleeping area on every level of the home and incorporate additional smoke alarms in larger homes. And whereas all smoke alarms should be tested semiannually to ensure that they are functioning properly to ensure your safety. Now therefore, I Brian Onks, Senior Mayor of the city of Clearwater, Florida, on behalf of the Clearwater City Council, do hereby proclaim October 8th through the 14th, 2023 as Fire Prevention Week in Clearwater. And I urge all residents of the city of Clearwater to protect their homes and families by heeding the important safety messages of Fire Prevention Week 2023 and to support the many public safety activities and efforts held by the Clearwater Fire and Rescue Department.
Thank you. As the Fire Marshal for the city, I'm grateful to receive the proclamation and your support ongoing. We really appreciate the support to get that fire safety message out there on a daily basis. It's important. So thank you.
Okay, all the proclamations are finished. Let's go to the public hearings. Before that, let's have approval of the minutes from the September 21st meeting.
Move to approve Agenda Item 5.1.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed unanimously. Thank you. City Manager reports 6.1, please.
Authorized a purchase order to Tetra Tech of Maitland, Florida for disaster debris monitoring services as a result of Hurricane Idalia.
Good evening, Jevon Graham, Division Chief of Emergency Management. February of this year, you all approved an agreement with Tetra Tech, which would allow us to maximize our reimbursements and refunds when we had an impact from a disaster. Fast forward to August of this year, we had Hurricane Idalia hit us. And even though it didn't directly impact us or directly hit us and stayed 100 miles offshore, it still did cause significant flooding and damage to our city infrastructure upwards to the point of $3.4 to $4 million. So by activating Tetra Tech and establishing this purchase order for $169,236, they will come in and help us get this refund and maximize our monies. And remember that most of their funds, up to 75% are reimbursable. So through direct administrative costs, 126,000 of their cost is actually reimbursable and allows us to only actually have to pay approximately $40,000 to have them come in and maximize the amount of money that we did get damaged from, from our infrastructure. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer any.
Any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 6.1.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed unanimously. Thank you. 6.2, please.
Approve the agreement for services between the city of Clearwater and Tampa Bay Psychology Associates for psychological and educational services for Clearwater Fire Rescue.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Scott Ellers, Fire Chief, Clearwater Fire Rescue. This request for your approval is an agreement between the city of Clearwater Tampa Bay Psychology Associates of Clearwater, Florida, for psychological and educational services for Clearwater Fire Rescue first responders in a not to exceed amount of $80,000. In recent years, the mental health of firefighters and first responders has become an increasing concern. Clearwater Fire Rescue offers several resources for our firefighters. However, Tampa Bay Psychology Associates was recommended by the Clearwater Firefighters Association's IFF 1158, Clearwater Police Department, and other, and other locations around the area. Tampa Bay Psychology Associates specializes in the mental health treatment of public safety employees and is utilized by numerous other departments within the region. This agreement, similar to the services provided to Clearwater Police Department personnel, provides for the maintenance of a 24-hour resource telephone number, individual counseling services, and mental health check-ins. This term of this agreement is for one year. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for the chief? Not, do we have a motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 6.2.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed unanimously. Thank you. 6.3, please.
Approve the Fire Station 46 Funding Agreement between the city of Clearwater and Pinellas County to provide funding to reimburse the city for the construction of the new Fire Station 46.
Again, Scott Ellers, Fire Chief, Clearwater Fire Rescue. This request for your approval is for the Fire Station Funding Agreement between the city of Clearwater and Pinellas County to provide reimbursement to the city for the construction of Fire Station 46 in the amount up to $1,166,523.08. This funding is derived from the milit rate levied on the city of Clearwater property owners. And the county agrees to fund the fiscal year 22-23 proportion share of 11.27% throughout the project. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions for clarification.
Any questions or comments? Anyone from the public want to speak to this item? Not, do we have a motion?
Move to approve Item 6.3.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed unanimously. Thank you. 6.4, please.
Accept a gas utility easement from Lake Valencia Homeowners Association for the construction, installation, and maintenance of a gas utility facilities on real property located at Lake Valencia Boulevard.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Alex Leon, Assistant Director for the Gas Department. This item is looking for your acceptance of this easement to serve a commercial customer. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Anyone from the public want to speak to this item? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 6.4.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed unanimously. Thank you. 6.5, please.
Declare a surplus for the purpose of sale of Clearwater Gas Systems propane operations to include propane supply tanks, propane bank, tank inventory vehicles and operating equipment and all operating assets at each customer location.
Again, Alex Leon, Assistant Director, Gas Department. With your acceptance to allow us to surplus these items will allow us to release these items for bid for the sale of the propane system.
Any questions or comments? Anyone want to speak to this item? Not, do we have a motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 6.5.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed unanimously. Thank you. 6.6, please.
Approve an interlocal agreement between Pinellas County and the city of Clearwater regarding adopting anchoring limitation areas within the city of Clearwater.
Evening, Mayor, Council, Eric Gandy, Chief of Police. So as you recall, back in January, we had a discussion item that dealt with long-term stored vessels and derelict vessels, specifically in Mandalay Channel. Back in 2021, I believe, the state statute changed to allow for the enactment of anchoring limitation areas. It limits people from storing vessels in, in areas declared anchoring limitation areas for 45 days. So during the discussion, that, that potential solution came up, which required engagement with the county because the county and not the cities are authorized to enact and permit or request permitting for anchoring limitation areas. So city staff were engaged with the county and they've agreed to pursue permits for an anchoring limitation area for Mandalay Channel. The statute is pretty good for this purpose at that location because of the density, the amount of traffic, and the fact that it's an urban area with a lot of residential docks in the area. So we're asking for the approval of an interlocal agreement to then allow the county to pursue the permitting. Just for everyone's edification, the permitting process is lengthy. There's a lot of steps along the way. You have Army Corps of Engineers, Coast Guard, county itself, and FDEP. So it could take some time. My last experience with this was Stevenson's Creek, and it ran about 12 months. Be glad to answer any questions.
Questions or comments? Is there anyone from the public that wants to speak to this item? If not, do we have a motion?
Move to approve Agenda Item 6.6.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed unanimously. Thank you. 6.7, please.
Approve an event license agreement between Jones Lang LaSalle Americas, Inc., in its capacity as agent as for the owner of premises known as Countryside Mall for, and the city of Clearwater Police Department for the purpose of hosting a shred-a-thon.
Mayor, Council, this is merely a license agreement again with Countryside Mall, much the same as we did for the event the other night. And basically, on October 28th, we're looking to do an Operation Medicine Cabinet and an Operation Shred. So they require this agreement to indemnify them and make sure that we take care of their property. Any questions?
Questions or comments? Anyone from the public want to speak to this item? Do we have a motion?
Move to approve Item 6.7.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed unanimously. Thank you. 6.8, please.
Approve a purchase order to Ferguson Enterprises LLC of Tampa for Neptune ultrasonic meters in the not to exceed amount of $150,000.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rich Gardner, Director of Public Utilities. These water meters are stocked in the Public Utilities Meter Shop and used to measure potable water provided to our customer. Ultrasonic meters are accurate at a wide range of flow and easier to main than traditional meters. This is a sole source contract with Ferguson Enterprises for Neptune brand ultrasonic meters. The contract will be for a total annual not to exceed amount of $150,000 through August 19th, 2024. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
And just, this is one of the meters. So you get an idea what you're approving.
So how many meters of $150,000?
What size?
One man.
There, this one is about 200 to 250, but 12 inches is like 15,000. Most of our meters are small like this.
Well, residential.
Right, residential meters are, yeah, 5'8". Right, residential meters are, yeah, 5'8".
Hi, Rich. I had a question about, so how far along are we on installing these? Are you like halfway finished with having all of our meters, these Neptune meters?
We're trying to install our meters on a 10-year cycle. We're a little bit behind, but we're trying to catch up by doing more than we would if we were just doing all on a 10-year cycle. We're just, we're just beginning to do that. So now, previously, we had some on a cycle. We just weren't keeping up with the 10-year plan. So I think I came before you six months or a year ago for meters and explained, I believe I explained we're on a 10-year cycle. So we're just getting started, really.
Okay. Because I just wondered, you know, when we have kind of a single source, it's not like these are the only meters we can put in, but we want to keep it consistent, these Neptunes? So how do we ensure that we're still getting a really good competitive price and that we don't get locked in forever with Neptune? You know, do we have a, reevaluate the cost per halfway through or anything like that?
We compare it to what we see out in the industry. Our price list here, this is sole source, but we're using the price, they agreed to let us use the price off the manatee contract, so we feel that's competitive and that's a way we can check the price.
But there must be some kind of process every three to five years you go out and look, like, are there cheaper meters that we should be transitioning to?
There are cheaper meters.
Or better?
We believe they'll be more expensive because we'll have to train everyone, we'll have to train the meter readers, we'll have to train our staff to maintain them. These particular meters have no moving parts, so there's nothing to wear out. So, and there's a battery in there. The battery is good for 10 years, and then we'll have to replace the battery. That's the maintenance. You know, the manufacturer says, you know, it'll never wear out. I believe it'll wear out, it's just much longer than a traditional meter with a moving part.
Okay. Thank you.
Hit your mic. David, hit your mic, please.
Is this like a drive-by meter reading? They don't have to get out?
No.
Or they have to actually get out and read every meter?
Meters, the meter readers get out and read every meter. We're starting to talk to customer service and about, you know, let's go to some kind of automated meter reading system. Gas has it already. We would just be kind of following in their footsteps.
Do you ever do a, do we do like an every other month reading where you have an estimated meter charge or usage charge per month, one month, and then you true it up the next month with actual people that go out and read it, an actual one, to save labor?
So customer service doesn't work for my department. My understanding, they read monthly.
Monthly?
Now, if someone parks their car on the meter or something, they may have to estimate the flow. They can't get to the meter for some, whatever reason, they'd have to estimate this.
I wonder what the employee cost of meter reading every single month is, you know, and if you could do it every other month and have an estimated month and then a true-up month and an estimated month?
As we go to automatically read meters, and it's a long-term process, it may sound like we're going to do it next month, no, it's going to take years to do it. As we go that, we'll save on meter reading costs, but the meters are harder to maintain, so we'll need a more skilled set of people to maintain those meters. You know, the meter readers, we would absorb into our other positions and train them to be operators and these skilled technicians.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public want to speak to this item? Not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 6.8.
Second.
All in favor. Aye. Opposed unanimous. 6.9, please.
Approve a purchase order to control technologies for pedestrian warning devices.
David Lutz, Traffic Engineering Division Manager. Unfortunately, I have nothing for show and tell. However, tonight I'll be presenting on the Connected Automated Vehicles program. Back in March, you guys approved a JPA with FDOT District 7 for a total program cost of $452,000 with a maximum 80% reimbursement for an upset limit of $361,600. This work order is $121,830 for the purchase of two pedestrian warning devices. We'll be installing those at Chestnut and Court, and 80% of this cost will be reimbursed for a city cost of $24,366.08. This project aligns with Ford Pinellas Safe Streets for All, as well as FDOT's Target Zero. This also aligns with four of our five strategic goals: high-performing government, community, wellbeing, environmental stewardship with emerging technology, and superior public services. I am available for handshakes and questions.
Any questions? Yes.
I'm just glad that they stayed with the yellow instead of going to the red because we would have had to take out all the ones we put in. It would have been very expensive, so that's all. None really of questions.
I just had a question on how you decided these locations.
We did not perform any kind of systematic review. We're basically working in the order that we provided in the work order. We're just moving from Chestnut, Court, Cleveland, MLK, yeah, just going down the list in terms of how we presented it in the JPA and in the program.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone from the public want to discuss this item? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve Agenda Item 6.9.
Second.
All in favor. Aye. Opposed unanimous, thank you. 6.10, I'm going to recuse myself on this and hand the gavel over to the capable hands of our Vice Mayor.
Now, don't make me use this.
Declare.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Robert Casmer, Public Works Engineering, Real Estate Coordinator. I'm briefed tonight for you to consider. This item is two parcels of vacant right-of-way land which the city assumed 53 and 37 years ago in support of future housing, which never occurred. Each parcel is 20 feet by 115 feet, which by size is very limited. These parcels also rest at the end of Cleveland Street, which is now a dead end, and also rests over 600 feet within a developed property. These parcels are currently used for sporadic parking with no fencing, which only exposes the city to liability. To block this off would only inhibit the adjacent owner's access to their sporting fields and events. In totality, these parcels have never evolved to now become obsolete, and it is the recommendation to consider said as an uneconomical remainder for surplus. Should you approve this request, all utilities will be reserved. City staff have approved this request. Any questions, please?
Any questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Albritton.
So I asked about this before, and I was told, I'm sorry. Keep forgetting to push that button. Was told it's worth about, the appraised value, about $17,000 for this piece of property. And my question was, is this going to be considered ancillary property for the church? Is this taxable property?
That I do not know, and if the church is present, they would have to speak to that. So I do not have an answer for you, no.
All right. Councilmember Beckman?
Thank you. So to my knowledge, the city has not ever given or donated property to a private entity. Is that correct? Other than for, you know, I mean, we've donated land for housing, to incentivize housing.
That I do not know.
I just, I have some concerns about donating a piece of property for a private entity's benefit, and it's not, it's not for the benefit of our taxpayers for this church.
I understand. The item, again, I'm presenting for you tonight is only for the consideration to be considered an economical remainder for surplus. Therefore, what happens after is up to the council to decide. That's not why I'm presenting this evening.
Can I, can I ask if?
Yes, absolutely.
Our city attorney can explain that difference? I mean, aren't we, the Agenda Item says to donate this property to this entity, so what's the difference between just identifying it as surplus?
I do believe that as written, the item does contemplate the donation. However, one option available to the council is to amend the item to approve the surplus declaration without going to that next step and actually approving the donation. So those two things can be segregated from each other, meaning the donation can be separate from the question of whether it's surplus or not. You could approve it as surplus without approving the donation. However, I would agree that as written, the item does contemplate donation. If it was approved straight without any amendments, I believe as written, it is a donation.
Thanks. Can I ask a question about, so the staff has asked $17,000 from Calvary or from First Baptist Church of Clearwater, and they said, no, the property is worthless. And yet, they do want it. Was there any negotiation back and forth about, well, how about $10,000? How about $7,000?
Not that I'm aware of.
So no negotiation about agreeing to a price that somebody thought might be more reasonable?
There were discussions with the legal department, but I was not privy to that, so I do not have the answer for you.
Okay. I think it might be wise for us to negotiate if, so that we at least get some type of money in return for property to the church.
If I may add, there are currently three utility lines within these parcels, and I've already gone to our engineering department to remove each line is $80,000. So for the city to spend $240,000 to potentially develop two parcels at a dead-end road in the middle of a sports field almost, I question the value versus the amount of money you would make off that.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, they want it with those lines underneath it, right? They want it just for parking or a walkway, correct? So they're not going to be moving lines either.
That would be for them to decide. Again, should they, if the property is however dispensed, they would be responsible for maintaining the lines by easement, as in the deed or by general easement.
So I go back to my question again. Right now, it's not, it's not worth anything really to the city. I don't have a problem with donating it. If it's going for a parking or a sports facility, that's an ancillary use for a church. I think it's taxable property, so at least we get something out of it in taxes over the, I don't know, it's a small little piece of property, but at least it's something. But I'd like to find, I'd like to have an answer to that at some point from somebody because I did ask it before and I didn't get a good answer. But I don't have a problem donating it because I don't think there's any value to it to the city. I think we may get something back in taxes eventually on it anyway, so.
Is there any interest in amending this or putting it off for the next meeting so you can get your question answered? Any interest, Councilmember Beckman?
I think for due diligence, I think there should be a discussion about a more reasonable price than zero versus $17,000. I just think, I think donating property for a private entity to use for whatever they value it, they want it, and it might not be of great value to us, but it is taxpayer property, and I think we should be receiving some dollar amount for it.
Understood. But again, you know, please note that the value of the property was, again, appraised at $17,000. It's been 53 years. Property always has a value. Location drives its value. Again, property is 600 feet within a developed parcel. I don't, again, I'm a real estate broker, I don't really understand any potential development for it with the limiting size that it may be. But again, that's a decision for the council to progress.
Councilmember Tishida?
So I do want that question answered, actually. Has the city ever donated land? I believe it has, in the past. Do we know that answer for a fact? Has the City of Clearwater ever donated land?
Outside of for affordable housing, it wasn't something that we could find, that we have done.
So in my mind, you know, we need to focus on the facts rather than who can benefit and be resentful about it. As I understand it right now, it has of no economical use for us. It's actually a liability. We can't do anything with it. We haven't been able to do anything with it. And there's a possibility that someone can use it to the betterment as well as be taxable, I think. So, you know, when I look at the piece of property and I looked into it, I also don't see how the city can benefit from keeping it at all. And just because, and I've been in this situation before where I'm willing to accept something for free but not to pay for it, right? Sure, I'll take something for free, but to pay for something is a different story. So if it is not a deficit to us, if it makes economical sense, then I don't have a problem donating it.
Councilmember Albritton?
Okay, so let me bring up another question to the city attorney. If we call the question on this and vote and it's a tie because now we only have, we've got one less council member, what happens? Does that, what happens in that case?
If a motion is made, whether it's to approve the item as written or a motion to amend the item, and that motion is seconded, then it will be voted on just like any other motion. If the motion ultimately results in a vote of 2-2, again, whether it's a motion to approve as written or a motion to amend, then that motion fails because any motion requires three affirmative votes in order to pass. However, if the motion fails 2-2, then procedurally, it automatically gets continued to the next agenda, and so it would come back on the next agenda for discussion. If I could also answer one other question, just because we're having the conversation. On the taxability question, I know Mr. Ravens is here, and we had the conversation, but it's a hard question to answer definitively because it is the property appraiser who ultimately makes that determination. I don't want to speak for Mr. Ravens, but my understanding of his, I guess I'll say, educated guess is that the property appraiser is most likely to rule it as exempt because of its very close proximity to the campus. However, that is purely a best guess, and so it's hard for us to say definitively as staff whether the property appraiser will rule it ancillary or not, and if so, what they will rule it ancillary to. And that's why, we know it's an important question, but a hard question to answer without the property appraiser definitively weighing in on that.
Councilmember Beckman?
So I also think we need to think about setting a precedent of giving away land for private use. And I have an example. So there's a condo development in Countryside, and I can't remember if it's on Countryside or Enterprise. I can get the name of it. But I was out there at their HOA meeting, and they have a piece of city, it was built like in the 70s, and I think it's like one parking spot per unit, and so they're really tight on parking, they said. And it abuts a piece of green space that's owned by the City of Clearwater. And it's a largish, medium-sized piece of green space that has some kind of big transformer in the middle. So it's not usable at all around the edges, and it has to be mowed. Again, if it's on Enterprise or Countryside Drive or whatever it is, it's, people see it. So it's kept up by the city. And they had asked me, could they purchase some of that green space that abuts their property for some overflow parking? And so I think it would be a similar argument. This is a piece of odd-shaped city property. We have to maintain it. There may be some liability if kids walk around it or climb on that transformer thing, whatever it is. And so what's to say that they don't line up and say, I want, you know, so many yards in of that green space, can you give it to me? And I want it for extra parking. And I just think, you know, we have to think about who's going to look at some other spaces and want that, and what's the precedent we're setting.
The adjoining property owner has privilege and right to purchase this parcel first. If you put it for a surplus and potentially it goes out to bid, then you may open that door. But as it stands now, they have the privilege.
I would, I think I, you know, like to make a motion that we table this and ask city staff to go back and try to negotiate some reasonable price for this piece of property, something that they something that they, we can both agree on.
Okay. Can you say what value you may be looking for?
$10,000? I don't, I don't know, something. Half, half of what it's appraised at. And I know it seems like a small amount, $10,000 in the whole scheme of things. But if we think about what $10,000 could be used for, for the benefit of our taxpayers, you know, we offer, we offer little programs at the library where if artists come in and teach art classes and supply things, and those are subsidized by our taxpayer dollars. So there are lots of ways we can impact our residents positively with as little as $10,000 a year for things like that. So I make a motion to delay a decision on this until we have some form of negotiation about a price.
Mr. Margolis?
Just one comment. The motion certainly is in order. However, before council votes on a motion, I believe a representative from the church is here and would likely want to be heard.
Yes, please.
Good evening, council members. I'm Clay Gilmore of McFarlane Ferguson, here on behalf of Calvary, 625 Court Street, Clearwater, Florida, 33756. So we've got just a quick couple pictures for you, just to kind of show where this is and how small, in addition to how far into Calvary's property it is. I don't know if that's showing up on the screen. There it is. Okay, so if you look right here, it's just that little red, little red parcel right there, which again, if you, that's McMullen Booth Road here, and that is all the way, as Robert noted, 600 feet inland of, or inland, west of McMullen Booth Road. You know, further, this is just a 40 by 115 foot, 115 square foot property that I understand, you know, it was appraised at $17,000. The city cannot do anything with this parcel other than extend the right-of-way further west, which would be uneconomically feasible at all. I mean, as he noted, there's a bunch of sewer underneath there, which is not going to be moved. We have no intention of moving water lines. It's simply going to remain, the sewer lines are going to remain. This also is just a picture from the end of the cul-de-sac showing that it's just a small strip, and it is about just from right there to right there. I mean, there's, there is not, not much you can do with that. And, you know, Tom can speak to any of the construction questions you have with regard to the sewer lines, water lines. And I understand Councilmember Beckman's position of this may set a precedent. Respectfully, I would disagree with your position on that open field and the generator or transformer. This is a completely different scenario in that it's such a small piece of land that has no use other than what it currently is, and that has been that way for 37 years, I believe. So if you have any questions for Tom, like I said, he can answer any of the more specific construction questions. And, you know, Calvary has been going at this now for two years or so, and spent thousands upon thousands of dollars just trying to get to the step where they can start their project. And we're still at step zero, just because of, you know, some transportation engineering comments that have been conflicting. And so basically, the reason we're asking for a donation is not because the city, Calvary, you know, is refusing to pay for it, but more that they've already paid for it in time and energy spent just trying to get started on this project. And again, if you have any questions for Tom, please feel free to ask.
Any further questions? We have somebody from the public who wants to speak.
Good evening, council members and staff. Christine Michael Eck, 855 Bayway Boulevard, Clearwater Beach, Florida. I have only one comment to make about this issue, and it has to do, again, with precedent, but not the precedent to which Councilwoman Beckman alluded, but the precedent of the following. If this gift is granted, are we not setting a precedent for any church, synagogue, mosque, temple, any other nonprofit or religious organization, to include Scientology, to come to us in the future and say, we have a piece of property that we would like you to gift. It's not worth anything. It doesn't have any value, in this case, $17,000. We know that you gave Calvary Church this property, so now we're coming to you as you have set a precedent. So please consider that. I don't do not know the history of the land in the past that was granted to any of our churches, synagogues, temples, mosques. I do not know that. But I do know that, that in making this gift, it is literally a gift to Calvary Church, you could be setting a precedent. Please consider that. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak about this?
I just wanted to thank, that photo was, was what I wanted to articulate and was not successful. It's literally a sidewalk. And so I understand the concerns about precedent and presented and all that, but there is a time where we need to be rational and just say, it just doesn't make sense. We're not going to get $17,000 from any other entity. No one's going to buy a sidewalk surrounded by another property. And I understand the commentary about other churches. You know, I do believe in separation of state and church and all that. But I think this is an example that does need to be evaluated on its own. It is a sidewalk in the middle of someone else's property. And so I don't think we can get 17,000 or anything else for that, for that property. And it's going to continue to be a liability for us. And I think this, this has warranted an exception.
Any further discussion here? Otherwise, Councilmember Albritton?
Yeah, I might as well put my two cents in. I, I kind of agree with that. I mean, this, this is a parcel that's surrounded by the person that we're thinking about giving it to. It's not on the side. It's not, it's not a right-of-way piece that attaches to a property. It's in the middle of the property. So to me, I don't see, I mean, I don't know how you came up with 17, I don't know how that was based, that value was based on, on. But I know when appraisers, appraisals are done of property, I mean, if you can't get to a piece of property, it's not going to be worth that much. And I just assume in this point, because of the utilities underneath it, being in the middle, I'm all for just donating it.
All right. Well, we have someone at the podium.
Mike Mastresario, six, or I'm sorry, 30 Turner Street, Clearwater, Florida. I want to look at it from a business standpoint. Something the city hasn't been doing for years is taking care of the property. So not only is it a liability, but it also can come back and cost the city money to take care of from now on. So it's an expense rather than an income. So I think you need to look long and hard at that because it's, needs to be addressed. If you, if it's not done, then it's a situation where we will have to throw dollars at it to take care of the property.
Thank you. City manager Poyer, you had something to add?
Yes, I just did want to point out that what the city does benefit from that is that we no longer have that property to maintain. So that would be a benefit to the city.
Very good. Well, we have a motion. Do we have a second on Councilmember Beckman's motion?
I'm sorry, one more thing on that. Also, just as it relates to precedent, how we, staff has looked at these things is that we look at each one on its own merits. And the reason that staff came up with this recommendation, just to dovetail and what staff has said, is because of where the property is located, the size of the property, and what options there are for that property. And so we would look at all of those things similarly to any other request that may came, come in. And if the requests were the same, and it was the same merits, then we would make the recommendation based on that. But this is a unique situation so far in that it hasn't been done before. And, but those are the reasons that we came to that, is because of the size and that there is no other use for this property, and then it is something that the city no longer has to maintain. Thank you.
Councilmember Beckman?
So I appreciate the comments, especially about the cost to maintain it. But I would, I would still reiterate the value in negotiating a reasonable price. And if that price is $1,000 or $500, and we're able to say, we do not give away city-owned property for private entities, regardless of if it's landlocked or small, that there is a value. And I think it's, it's essential to understand there's a value because they've worked on this for a couple of years. Part of the reason they don't want to pay is because they've said they've invested a number of dollars trying to make that happen. And I appreciate that. But I think to give it to them for zero then is just, I think it's, it's not a good message for our taxpayers to say, yes, as a matter of fact, we have now in 2023, we've given away taxpayer dollars or taxpayer property for free. But if we could say we've negotiated it down and even $500 or something. But I, I just think, I'm just not comfortable with that precedence of giving away property that's owned by the city, that's not incentivized for housing or something that the entire community benefits from.
Understood. Councilman Albright, I have an additional photo if I may present. It is an enlarged of the parcel. Again, these are the parcels in question. Oh, I'm sorry. All right, where is this? I'm sorry? Oh, there is a picture. Yes, I'm sorry. Okay. Again, these are the parcels in question. Cleveland Street. To go any further as what potentially suggested would never occur. Parking's already in place. Sporting field's already in place. The property's already developed. Again, my purpose this evening is not to suggest anything but to potentially uneconomical surplus, and the council thereafter then makes their decision.
Did you have something else to add? Okay. Mr. Margolis, anything else?
Just to make sure we're on the right page procedurally, I mean, Councilmember Beckman had made a motion, and so that motion is currently pending. So the procedurally, it will either be a motion that gets seconded, or it fails for lack of second, or it's withdrawn as a result of other commentary or things that you've considered since. So I think that's where we need to pick, kind of pick up procedurally. I see the clerk nodding at me appreciatively. So just want to make sure that we're on track procedurally to reach a disposition of some kind, whether that's a disposition to either continue the item to the future meeting, whether it's a disposition to approve the donation, whether it's a disposition to approve the surplus declaration but insist on payment, or whatever the council's will is at this time.
Thank you. And that's the destination I was heading to. So at this point, would you mind repeating the motion that you proposed, Councilmember Beckman?
So I think we should table this with a direction that you would go and negotiate and a mutually acceptable price for this property, some dollar amount.
Understood.
Do we have a second? Having not heard a second, the motion fails?
I make a motion that we declare a surplus of this property, and we can have a discussion on the sale later date.
Do we have a second?
Or the donation.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I, I think setting a precedence will perhaps help you fight for the HOA who needs the property next to their property. So the motion passes three to one with Councilmember Beckman.
No, I said yes to that.
Oh, you did say yes?
Yes.
Oh, you did? Okay, unanimous? My ears are now working better. Thank you. Very good. Yes?
Can we just get some clarification in terms of what is needed for when we bring this back?
I'm sorry?
Just some clarification on what is needed for additional information for when we bring this back to the council.
Well, we just decided that it's surplus, but Councilmember Albritton said to bring it back at a later date to discuss a price. So I think when we come back, if there's confirmation that there's been a discussion about what price might be acceptable, and also I think Councilmember Tashida's question about has the city ever donated any property to a private entity at no cost, you know, donated?
I mean, for me, I'm going to use that time to actually do a little bit more research to solidify my argument or, or, or address it. Because I, I would, I would vote to just donate it. But your concerns, you're so adamant about your concerns that I, I don't mind having another go at this, at this discussion. So I don't necessarily need anything else from the staff. I just want to have an opportunity to discuss this further, if that's what you want, for the donating.
Do we have the direction that you need? It seems like we don't.
I would agree that we don't. There was a motion for staff to negotiate that failed, so I didn't get that direction. And then there's another motion that passed that was to separate it and bring it back. I know that Councilmember Beckman said for the staff to then negotiate, but I didn't, I didn't get consensus from that. So just, is staff to be negotiating?
No, I think my motion was to bring it back and decide if we're going to donate or, I think another discussion is warranted, and it gives us time to look into it, as Councilwoman Tashida said. So I think just bringing it back at another meeting, we can decide if it's going to be donated or whether we need to, you know, negotiate.
Do we need to make a motion to put it on the next agenda?
No, I don't believe so. I think at this point, unless the clerk says otherwise, I think the record is clear, and I see her nodding. So I would agree. I think the record is clear. But it's also clear, I think, what questions, you know, individual council members have, particularly, you know, on everything from the taxability question is one that I've given the best answer I can. But perhaps Mr. Ravens and I can speak with the property appraiser's office and see if we can tease out a little bit more from them as to whether this will be considered taxable or not. Again, we'll never have a 100% answer on that, but at least we could maybe get a semi-definitive answer, or at least try to get a semi-definitive answer on that, because I recognize how important that question is and how that could affect people's individual perspective on it.
Councilmember Albritton?
So I think that's an important question, because I could tell you, with, with our church, we have a, the main church that people come to to have the service, but then we also have separate facilities. We were big at one time, not so big now. But those, all those, just because it's on the same campus, they're considered ancillary structures and they're taxed. And the same thing with Church Scientology, you know, everybody says, oh, they're not taxed. Well, they are on all their ancillary properties. So I, I think that's a very interesting definition I'd like to have firmed up.
Very good. Shall we bring the mayor back from his isolation booth?
Yes.
All right. And we'll move on to 6.11 when he returns.
Thank you.
Authorize a purchase order to J and F Petroleum Group for the installation of two 15,000 gallon above-ground tanks.
Good evening, Perry Consen Fleet Manager. Solid waste fuel site has three 12,000 gallon underground fuel tanks that contain diesel, gasoline, that provide fuel to the fleet of vehicles. These tanks and many of the underground components were installed in 1996. The general accepted life expectancy of underground fuel tanks is about 30 years. This project will include closing the underground tanks by filling them with foam. They will then install two 15,000 gallon above-ground tanks and the associated concrete slabs, piping, and dispensers. The new tank system will tie into our existing fuel The new tank system will tie into our existing fuel management system. The current estimated schedule is about 45 weeks to complete once we give the notice to proceed. Much of this manufacturing time is needed to fabricate the tanks. While the fuel site is down for approximately five to six weeks during the construction, city staff will use the wax fuel cards to obtain fuel for city vehicles and/or equipment. Any questions?
Any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
I just had a question about filling those underground tanks with foam. I'm sure that's like after they're drained, you fill them with foam. And then is that the best way to ensure that there's not corrosion or leaking of harmful chemicals at all by filling them with foam?
I have Joe Jachiko here from the engineering department. I'll have him answer that question.
They are, they're actually cleaned, they're, they're water whipped, they, they use chemicals and they clean them out and they're, they're fully cleaned and, and they're filled with foam, a flowable fill, foam material, and they are, they're, they're clean and, and good to go. And they'll do a full assessment of that site too, once they close and start ripping up the concrete and such, when they remove the other line, the underground lines, they'll, they'll take samples all along, all through there, so we'll know exactly what's going on.
Okay, just wanted to make sure it was safe environmentally. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone from the public want to speak to this item? Not, do we have a motion?
Move to approve item six point 11.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed unanimously. Thank you. Six point 12.
Approve the 2024 city council meeting schedule. Council members, as stated in City Council Rule 1, your work session council meetings are held on the first and third Thursday of the month with a work session proceeding. In your agenda packs, I have outlined the dates where there may be some conflicts. So in, besides, in addition to the normal schedules, the following conflicts have been identified with the following recommendations. Passover next year takes place Monday, April 22nd through April 30th and which conflicts with the April 29 work session, so staff is recommending that we have a council meeting only on Thursday, May 2nd. To accommodate Jazz Holiday, which is being held October 17th through the 20th, we're recommending that we move the Thursday, October meeting to Wednesday, October 16th. And to accommodate City Council Rule 1, staff is recommending moving the Thursday, December 19 council meeting to Wednesday, December 18th with no work sessions. It'll just be a council meeting only. And in addition to those dates, we're also requesting two work sessions, so January 10 for citywide housing educational workshop and January 30 for the annual strategic planning session.
Any questions or comments on this? Yes, ma'am.
I just had a question about the citywide housing educational workshop. What's that intended to be or what do we look forward to with that? Oh, what, what, what do we envision? What's the citywide housing educational workshop going to be about? I mean, that sounds interesting.
I'm not familiar with that specifics of that.
Okay. Okay.
It'll be nice to know, I guess, if it's on your agenda. I suggest we have like two meetings between January 1st and, and the election day. Just kidding. A little levity. All right. Do we need a motion on this?
Yes, please.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item six point 12.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed unanimously. Thank you. Now time for citizens to be heard regarding a not on the agenda. Items not on the agenda, please keep your comments for three minutes. Please fill out a card if you haven't and please turn your card in when you come up.
How are you guys doing today? I'm Tony from 520, 522 and 526 Nash Keys Captains and the Prelude Sports Bar. I'll just give you a rough background. I just came down here about two years ago. I was a little bit naive to the political agenda of this area and even had a moment of prayer before I came out here today and was thinking about even saying this stuff. I have done projects here in New York, in New York City. I've done projects in upstate New York. I've dealt with breweries and gentrified whole city blocks. I have never in my time of doing this experienced in a town that is so convoluted and lacks communication with these departments. I have, I have experience upon experience taken me somewhere about a year and a half to get permits and constantly being shut down at every corner that I had, to the point where I have the fire department telling me that, they told me that it was a bad idea to do business down here. I don't know if that's what you guys want to be portrayed as, but I'm a big advocate of the American dream. My father came down here from, came up here from Mexico with nothing but a shirt on his back and started his first business with twenty, with eight, that eight thousand dollars. This sickens me to see the city like this. You guys or the city and the politics and whatever agenda you guys have fighting amongst yourselves is killing the American dream. I'm sick and tired of seeing it. You guys are supposed to be serving the citizens and all I see is about high-budget agendas to focus on people who have more money than the whole city combined. I'm finding it harder and harder. It's a bunch of double speak is what I call it, telling, telling us that you guys are for the people, for the town, for the locals, but I yet to see local businesses open up with any, any kind of hope. The gatekeeping that's involved in local politics for the downtown Clearwater, again, is something that we should be appalled of. I don't know if it's malice or if it's incompetence, but I always, I've, I've now realized that malice and incompetence tend to work hand in hand without any communication. And that's what I find that is happening here. I don't know what else to do. This is my speech. I hope that you guys understand that I have people that depend on me. I have people, my, my own family, Robert, who's came, came here and invested his dream and his savings into this, this community, which we believe in it. We've put in our money where our mouth is with no, no money asked from you guys just to get out of our ways. That's all we ask. You wouldn't be having these conversations like with Cavalier Church saying that they're, they're having two years to get a small parcel of land. Allow people to develop this community for you guys. Stop getting in our way. It comes from small business, large business, everything. Focus on the people and not yourselves. That's all I ask from city officials and I've seen great people from Ann Lopez to Vicky do their best and local citizens to try to help us. It's, but that's it. I just hope you guys understand.
Thank you. Mr. Dowk, will you have someone get with? Mr. Dowk, will you have someone get with this gentleman, please? Thank you.
I'm Mr. Haluba. Now we know why downtown Clearwater is vacant.
Amen.
The First Amendment protects public expression of opinions without censorship, interference or restraint by the government, Mr. Gandy. On August 17th, Mr. Longst violated my civil rights and he disrupted the council meeting, not me. The abortion clinic lawsuit against Clearwater Police is another First Amendment civil rights violation case. The Jacquez Lapreid Civil Rights Lawsuit filed against Clearwater Police and personally against Daniel Slaughter, who doesn't even show up tonight, is another case. I believe there are many, many others that are committed by Clearwater Police on an ongoing basis. It's just another attempt to justify the exorbitant expense Clearwater Police really is and the unnecessary expense. Clearwater Police just tries to, you know, they're out there trying to justify their existence. The overt disregard for citizens' rights is only going to get worse under the irritable Eric Gandy. Gandy doesn't have the proper temperament to be police chief. Now perhaps, ongoing Clearwater Police will just be sued out of existence. But that's one reason why people, you know, don't want to come to Clearwater, don't want to invest in Clearwater, so on and so forth, but the red tape is amazing. Now at the last meeting of September 21st, I observed a couple walking down Fort Harrison. They were shoulder to shoulder laughing and giggling like, you know, really close friends might. It was Mr. Margulis and Jennifer. Were you two holding hands?
Uh huh, not appropriate, Mr. Haluba. Anyone else?
Can you hear me? Yes. Thank you so much, city council members and audience. I have no malice towards anyone and I think that you guys are doing a great job. So let me start with that. I'd like to request, pardon me, my name, oh, yes, Cal Tiger, AKA Suresh Sandarajan. I understand that you have a manufacturing month proclamation for October, so I would like to just state that being that it is manufacturing month in October, do you have anything like a by Pinellas provision in your bids possibly? So I would like to find out if there's anything along those lines. And secondly, I would like to promote the use of AI in manufacturing. Artificial intelligence is taking over most aspects of technology, as you guys are familiar. However, I found that I could create a, what's called a BOM, which is manufacturing speak for bill of materials and routing instructions in a matter of seconds in a little project that I worked on recently. And lastly, I'd like to set up a small manufacturing, a small American manufacturers alliance to assist the manufacturing companies in Pinellas County. I believe that Pinellas County is the second largest hub for manufacturing all in, in all of Florida. Okay? And one last item is that I have an FDI investment of $500,000 that an investor from Canada wants to bring into Clearwater. I've tried in vain to contact a whole lot of people, try to see how I could facilitate that, you know, modest transaction, but I'm really having no luck. So I would like to find out if there's anybody that could assist me, you know, with this quest. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dowk, has anyone gotten his name since the last meeting we talked about this?
Yes, Mayor, I think at least twice before this gentleman has come to council and spoke, I think on both occasions, our economic development folks have reached out. I think they've, they've worked with him even in the past prior to that.
We'll get with you, sir. Okay, we'll get with you. Your time's done, okay?
He's, he's welcome to call me.
Please call Mr. Dowk, okay? Thank you. All right. Next, items not on the agenda. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Tori Walker. I'm the DCM supervisor for St. Vincent de Paul Disaster Services. Our address is 2647 Narnia Way, Lando Lakes, Florida, 34638. I am the DCM supervisor for Pinellas and Pasco County. I just wanted to, one, just inform the community and you guys that we are here boots on ground covering Hurricane Ian. SVDP is a Christian lay-in nonprofit organization that is providing case management for disaster recovery for Hurricane Ian. We advocate for individuals and families with FEMA, SBA, their personal insurance agencies and provide survivors with other resources such as housing, food, repairs, utilities, rental assistance. Some of our partners are the Salvation Army, American Red Cross, FEMA, Volunteer Florida Catholic Charities, Recover Pinellas and other long-term recovery entities. So far, we have, I think, 10 cases from Clearwater alone and we are waiting on the ISO list from FEMA so that we can address some of the other clients that applied for FEMA back in September. People may wonder why now, being that IDAIA has just recently come through, but the FEMA sequence of delivery is emergency assistance, which is the voluntary agencies, that's the, the first emergency response. Then there's insurance, the homeowners and renters insurance, housing assistance, other needs assistance, that's not income-based. And of course, when these clients that were affected by Ian apply for SBA loans, they that are determined fit, that they're not eligible. And then there's another, another, other needs assessed for income-based. Then there's the unmet needs, which is where we come in to provide long-term case management partnering with local long-term recovery groups. We are also serving group three counties for Hillsborough, Manatee, Pasco, Polk and of course, Pinellas. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. We appreciate your work. Thank you for stopping by. We appreciate it. Next, items not on the agenda.
Mr. Unc, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
All right, my name is Frank Dixon, Clearwater, 1125 Marshes Street, Clearwater, Florida. I'm up here about Cherry Harris Park, a place where I've, I have and the whole community of, it's MLK nine, but you used to call it Greenwood Community, a place where we gather at on Saturdays and sometimes on Sunday. But for whatever reason now, it's, we can't do that now. We, a lot of us don't have money to go downtown to, to rent the place that you guys want money for and seem like if we out there 10 or 15 of us gathering, here come the cops. Make us leave. One of the searchers. Park closed at dusk. Do your job. We understand that. If we're out there after dark, make us leave. Don't harass us. That's what we asking for. And also I do a lot of work on 200 North Garden Avenue. It's right there at Garden and Drew Street. It's a sidewalk that's been tore up now for over a year now. And I take care of the maintenance there and it's a mess. And the folks are asking me if I could talk to somebody because I think it's belongs to the Scientologists and like I said, it's a mess down there. And once again, the cops, the mayors, the chiefs, please let us have our park, man. We don't have nowhere to go. If we do, we got to go somewhere. Where the temple, St. Pete, Largo, Tarpon, and we have a beautiful park at Cherry Harris Park where we can gather, have a good time, cookouts, but we can't because the cops, as soon as they see anything on Facebook about it, they beating us to the park. 10 cops out there already. Fear. And we already have fear of y'all and y'all know why. Let us have our park and let us have some gatherings in our park. When it's time for us to leave, it's time for us to leave. On the beach, you walk around, you do your job out there, make sure nothing will happen. If that's what you guys got to do when we have a gathering, fine, but as for us harassing us and doing the stuff that you've been doing the last probably three, four years, please let us have our park. That's the only gathering we have around here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Next.
How we doing today? My name's Thurfren Newton and I come before you guys today just to raise an underrated issue that I believe to be happening in this town. So, um, where do I start? So it all started, and I know it's going to sound a little funny, but I'm just going to, I'm going to be extremely blunt. My mom, she's like a, she's an older woman and she went to the local Walmart, like the neighborhood Walmarts. And I guess as she was like just shopping, minding her own business, you know, just getting like our groceries, I guess like some kids went up to her and I asked her, like she really knew them, she did, she told me that she did not know them. But I guess one of them like seemed to raise their leg and fart on her and they thought it was funny, you know, they just like ran away from her after that. The Walmart informed authorities, this, this was honestly a minute ago. And the authorities came, but they just dipped. Like, they la, they left. And, um, I've been doing my research and trying to find these kids, bring them to justice, but, uh, they seem to be like TikTokers or Instagrammers, pranksters, whatever you wanna call them. I call them harassers. I mean, like, that's all their comedy really is. They just go around thinking they're funny, assaulting people. And I just don't wanna be able to raise my kids in a town where I'm worried about going to the local grocery store or I'm go, I'm worried about going to wherever without like KJ Smoothers or Zach Crazes or just any form of internet prankster pulling some shenanigans on me and my people in my community. Um, that's all I really have to say. Uh, anything else? No, other than that, no, yeah, I, uh, apart from everybody else, I feel like the police community, the police handle themselves pretty well. I've personally never had any issues. And like usually when I do see like pranksters get into run-ins with the police, they always look stupid, not you guys, like the, uh, the YouTubers. But, um, that's all I really have to say to you guys. And, uh, it's like one more thing, though. I am an internet prankster. All right, thank you for your time.
Are there any adults in the room that wanna talk? Thank you.
Hey, guys, how you doing? Little bit of a two-part thing here. I own a business down on Highland Avenue in Clearwater. And another thing that the gentleman was talking about, Ray Stewart, in, uh, 1831 North Highland Avenue, Clearwater. Um, a little bit of a two-part thing. Uh, the young man, the gentleman was talking about the Cherry Harris Park thing. Um, that is gonna probably be something that explodes into something here real soon because the young lady who does that annually, she goes out and she gets the permits from the city. She buys the portalit, she does all of that. But when the police come out, they really stress that their lieutenants and their higher-ups are ordering the, the corporals and the regular police officers to come out and police the neighborhood the way that they do. What's gonna happen with that is in the future, that's gonna explode, into something that we see on TV in the community that, that doesn't have that type of, uh, resistance between the police and the community. So, that is gonna be something that comes up in the future, and it's gonna cause a problem. And you guys should really be paying attention to that because the people who, um, solicit those parties and all that, they actually come down and buy the permits to take care of that. And then when the police come around, they literally say that they're told to annex the avenues, to make sure people can't park and make sure people can't gather, when what they end up finding out is the people that around the community owns those properties, from the churches to the little small properties, the neighborhood owns those properties, and they give permission to the people to do that. But when the police come around, they have no desire to let the people be able to congregate without them asserting some type of authority. It's erroneous or whatever it is, but it's gonna cause a lot of problems. Uh, that's one thing. Um, the other thing is, is, um, the permits to have, to do business in Clearwater. Uh, what the gentleman was saying is absolutely correct. There was a, uh, an amendment, uh, throughout the city when, um, I'm gonna say his name, when Donald Trump was in office, he made it very easy for, uh, businesses to do business without all of the red tape and the little small things. Well, I got a notice, uh, from my landlord. Uh, it was an email saying that he had a $73,000 proposed type of, um, punishment for the way that we were advertising at our businesses. Now, you know, I put a lot of money into the Walmart Plaza on Highland Avenue to operate a business there. And, um, just to be told yesterday, as a matter of fact, that the advertisement that I put out, which is not on city property, we think that it's on private property, but we have a gentleman that comes around and take pictures and tells, he actually gave me a, a coded handbook on how to be in compliance. And it had probably a hundred things that you can't do to advertise your business. Now, I'm not really understanding it, but is there something that we could do to come to you guys to find out? Are we allowed to put up flags to say we have a business here? Are we allowed to put, uh, writing on the windows to say this is what we're doing in the business? Or we're allowed to put?
Your, your time's up, and someone will get with him.
Are we allowed to do anything that would allow us to do business? If, if it is, there's something that you guys can put out as far as a pamphlet or a flyer or something? Let us know.
We'll let you know.
That we could do business in the city of Clearwater.
Time's up, thank you. We'll let you know. Someone, please get with him. Thank you. Anyone else on items not on the agenda?
My name is Patrick Raftrey. I'm a resident of Countryside for the last forty-four years. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council members and city staff, and the public is still here. Wanted to talk on two things very briefly. Number one is to congratulate the city staff for the publication of the Tree Canopy Process that I was able to get a copy of. It was very comprehensive with respect to addressing the problems brought up by residents with respect to tree removal back in January of 2023. Caused the process to be stopped. And a number of months were taken to revise that process, and I have a copy of that. It is very comprehensive, very detailed, and outstanding job by the, done by the city staff to address this problem. I understand they're gonna reach out to the community and HOAs and publicize this, but I think it's important that many residents be aware of this change and for the city to take credit for addressing a problem brought up by the residents. Three items of particular interest on it are an extensive process to notify a property owner where a tree is going to be removed from their property. Secondly, replanting of trees where they had been removed in the same area, in the neighborhood, if not in the same area, or in the zone. We've all been looking for replanting of trees once they're removed. And finally, to let everyone know that the city has budgeted just over a million dollars for this effort, which is a significant investment in the tree canopy of Clearwater. So, I wanna congratulate the city on that. The second item I want to address is that we are now in the middle of, or the beginning process of elections. We have at least seven candidates running for three seats, including the mayor. I think that is a great credit to the city that that many people are enthused about coming to the city and contributing to us. I think the residents need to get to know those candidates, know what they advocate, what they stand for, what they have concerns about, and what they will take upon themselves to address if they get elected to the council. The gentleman was talking about his business activities in the Clearwater area having difficulties. This is an opportunity to get a council member running for office that is very aligned with what he needs to have done to help him and to put that person into office. So, we have three candidates. Get to know them, understand who they are and what they advocate. What have they spoke about before at the city? What's important to them, what's important to you? Make a intelligent decision as to who you vote for. One final note, I've talked to a number of the candidates that are running, and although we say this is a nonpartisan election, we need to keep it that way. I couldn't agree with it more. There's a lot of candidates that have endorsements from a lot of people that are not residents of Clearwater, nor officials of the city of Clearwater, nor they vote in this election. I guess it's good to get the endorsements, but that should not flavor the choice of council members that we elect for city of Clearwater. We wanna know people who will do things for Clearwater. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Raftrey. Anyone else on items not on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, council members, Bill Joneson.
Time's up.
Thank you. I do have a hearing problem, and I am having trouble hearing some of the, the speakers here. So, if you would speak, uh, closer into the mic or something. At the library, when we get back there, there is a hearing loop that can be played through my hearing aids, and I appreciate that very much. But I know you're gonna be doing some more business tonight, and I would like to be able to, to hear you as much as possible. Thank you for the, for the ones that are, are speaking up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Joneson. Anyone else on items not on the agenda?
Good evening again, Mayor, Council members and citizens. That doesn't work. Good evening again, uh, Mayor, uh, Council members, city staff. Again, Christine, Chris Michaelak, 855 Bayway Boulevard, Clearwater Point. Uh, again, I'm coming to you today, uh, and my comments now are related to the Chart House Project, 850 Bayway Boulevard. Today, each of you received a copy of an email that Clearwater Point residents sent to Ms. Gina Clayton last Thursday, September 28th. Appropriate Clearwater planning and development principles were copied on that email. In brief, this is again regards to the Chart House Development, 850 Bayway Boulevard. In brief, Decade Properties Inc., owner Jeff Kileyber, attorney agent Brian Ongs Jr., have not fulfilled specifically the obligatory requirements of their development order, specifically CDC Section 440, which says that have to be granted a permit by the due date of, it was one year, two weeks ago, Thursday, September 21st. Again, the permit was to be had granted one year, two weeks ago, September 21st, 2022. Therefore, their permit application, their request, from our perspective, those of us who live at Clearwater Point, is null and void. Decade Properties Inc., owner Jeff Kileyber, attorney agent Brian Ongs Jr., should be notified immediately and instructed to begin anew. We respectfully ask you, our Clearwater leaders, on behalf of Clearwater Point 465 families, to take an active role, an active role in righting this wrong. Again, we ask you to take an active role in righting this wrong. Thank you.
Anyone else on items not on the agenda? Okay. City Attorney Reports?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Other council action, uh, Charter Review Committee process and timeline? Not point one.
Am I going to take the lead on this? Uh, I know it's listed on the agenda as a council item, but it is something that Councilmember Beckman had requested at the last time, and I had indicated that I'd be happy to provide explanation of what the status is of this. Uh, so, in summary, the Charter Review Committee is an advisory committee that in many ways is similar to other advisory committees that the council appoints. Uh, it is a ten-member committee, which makes it larger than a few of our other boards. Um, it's also unique in the sense that it has an even number of people. However, the Charter Review Committee can be more than ten members. So, ten members is the minimum that is set. Our current committee, I believe, has eleven, which is a good practice because odd numbers, uh, make for, uh, the ability to break, uh, voting deadlocks. Um, as we've seen this evening, uh, sometimes even numbers don't work out all that well procedurally. Uh, the purpose of the committee per the city charter is to review our existing charter and to make recommendations for improvements or changes there, too. It's easy to state that rule, but it's actually a lot harder to carry it out because there are a wide number of policy proposals that either are not permissible in the charter because we are preempted by state law or federal law, or they would be unconstitutional, or in the alternative, they are provisions that could go in the city charter but would be highly unorthodox to put in our city's constitution, the types of things that would normally go in council rules or in council ordinance. And that's where you run into a lot of questions, uh, structurally as to what belongs in the charter and what doesn't. There are not a lot of right and wrong answers. I can only say what's commonly done and what's not commonly done. So, for example, uh, matters involving the structure of government are very common in the city charter. Matters relating to things like code enforcement typically would not be. Uh, as far as the membership itself is concerned, uh, they have to meet every five years. So, the committee convenes as necessary, but it must be at least every five years. You know, if you look at the state level, there is a State Constitution Revision Commission that meets far less often than that. I think it does make sense for local committees to meet more often than the state because the impact is felt only in our community, whereas a state commission has impact affecting millions and millions of people across the state. However, whether the committee should continue to meet every five years or whether it should meet at a less frequent interval is often a topic of discussion among the committee itself. Uh, typically, they will meet, uh, in person, and they will meet in the year preceding an election. That makes sense because the entire point of the committee is to discuss whether some items should be recommended to the council for inclusion on the city ballot, um, or, that is to say, on the next election ballot. So, if the Charter Review Committee were to meet, uh, far moved from or shortly thereafter an election, it would be quite ineffective because it would be so long before the council could put, uh, an item on the next ballot. Like any committee, they are subject to the sunshine law. They're also subject, meaning to the, uh, public notice requirements, um, meaning, uh, public opportunity to be heard if there's any proposition or motion that comes before the committee. Uh, and they cannot discuss committee business among themselves outside the sunshine. So, much like the council is bound by that rule, so is the Charter Review Committee. Uh, that's essentially how it works. Um, you know, my predecessor, Pam Aiken, had attended that meeting on behalf of the city for however many times, you know, Pam was here. Uh, so, I have taken up that mantle. I attended on behalf of the city, uh, but do not vote, and I do not weigh in on the policy wisdom of any particular proposal. I see my role as answering legal questions, um, but I confine my role to that only. Um, that said, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you, David, for that overview. So, I put this, um, item on our agenda to discuss, and, you know, we didn't have a workshop, council workshop this week because it was unusual for other reasons. Um, so, we're discussing it tonight, but I'd like to get some input and some discussion and consensus from, uh, the council on how we expect the Charter Review Committee to function in relation to the city council. And as Mr. Margola said, they meet, and they meet consistently for how many months or weeks?
The current rubric is every two weeks, uh, so we've been meeting every other Wednesday evening. Um, typically, it goes on for several months. I defer to the clerk exactly how long, but there's a practical limit as to when they must adjourn because at some point, we get too close to the next election.
Right.
And there's no time even for the, for the committee to make a recommendation for the council, uh, to accept. So, I would say in practice, it really can't go on much longer than five or six months, but would defer to the clerk as to how early it could start.
Typically, the appointment is made in January, and they start meeting, depending on what the meeting is. They start meeting in February all the way through the end of September and with the hopes of completing their work in October. So, currently, the plan is they're gonna be looking at the recommendations that they have voted on thus far at their next meeting, and then the meeting after, they will vote on their final report and present at council the following meeting.
It's like a full seven months of work, right? A real commitment. And you've included in this agenda item, uh, the attachments on, you know, attendance and, you know, people, it, it takes a good deal of time, um, to meet and discuss these nuanced. you know, people, it takes a good deal of time to meet and discuss these nuanced recommendations. So in one of our more recent work sessions, we had an item brought to the council for the first time without public input or comment, and that was clearly within the scope of what the Charter Review Committee was in the early stages of discussing, as in our form of elections. And you've got the notes from May 24th, June 14th, and July 12th. The committee was discussing our election format, whether we change the election date to coincide with the general presidential and midterm election cycle, whether we moved or leave the current voting system in place and take no action to change it. And then finally, July 12th, there was, you know, a majority that moved to investigate districting that is supported by an outside consultant. The motion was duly seconded and carried with a following vote of a 7 to 3. So this group of 11 people is clearly looking at what's best for Clearwater in our election format. And, you know, they're, they were wanting to bring in experts, and they did bring in some experts, and they were trying to deliberately and thoughtfully reach some consensus on a recommendation. But from feedback we've, but we hopscotch that. We, some members here, we made a, you made a motion to put, to direct the city attorney to draft language to change our election date and format without any recommendation from the Charter Review. They're not even finished with their work. And from feedback we've received publicly and privately from Charter Review members, they've come and spoken using their three minutes to say how disappointed and upset they were that we, you know, totally negated their work and moved forward without public input or commentary. And I'll tell you from my point of view, I haven't heard one person stand up and say that they want to advocate for changing our election, nor have I received an email to that point. If you all have, I'd like you to share that. So anyway, I think, you know, they're asking, and they submitted a letter, why we would jump over them and effectively make their time and efforts worthless. So I think we need to answer to that. I thought it would be a good idea to have a discussion on how we expect our Charter Review process to work. I thought our process was one where we allow the Charter Review to do their work, and then they come to us with results and recommendations for us to thoughtfully discuss and consider. I also thought that if we had any particular item we would like them to discuss or consider before the Charter Review had finished their work, that we would ask the committee for their input or potentially prioritize certain items before other items if we feel as a council or even individual that some type of prioritization is needed. And in the notes that Mr. Margolis has attached this agenda item, there's no indication that anyone up here asked them to discuss particular things, except I think Councilmember Bunker had one point that was, that you wanted discussed here. And so, you know, I'm just going to say that if I was on that committee, based on what happened in our earlier work session, I would seriously doubt whether we, the council, appreciate and value their work and feedback. And so I'd like to have a discussion about, you know, what's the justification for not waiting for a recommendation from the Charter Review?
So there's a lot to unpack, to quote Mr. Margolis, there's a lot to unpack here. And I agree with you. I think that the Charter Review Committee deserve an explanation. I have listened to all the audios, I've read the minutes, and I read the email that Mr. Johnson wrote, and I understand, and I've heard everything that was said, and I empathize with the feeling of being dismissed. But I'm sure, as Mr. Johnson knows, this is a particularly difficult and complicated position that we're in. And I'm going to start from scratch so that at least my rationale can be understood. I ran for this office not because I had political aspirations. It was simply because I was frustrated. I was frustrated about all the hovering, and that's what I call it, and that's the incessant discussion and nothing being accomplished. Imagine Clearwater Amphitheater, City Council, the marquees for the Capitol Theater. It just goes on and on and on. And I wanted to have a chance to narrow that gap between the warp speed of the private sector and the snail pace of the government. In order to do that, I acknowledge that one needs to be bold, and I understand that there are consequences to that. This is one of them. And again, I apologize for those members who feel that they were dismissed, but I heard every audiotape, I read every minute, so you are heard. But the position that I'm in is that I have to make a decision, and I promised on my campaign, based on two things, the information and the data before me, and what is best for most. So looking at the facts, we have five elected officials who appointed 11 members to discuss things at the Charter Review. Six said status quo, four said, let's go for it. I've had separate conversations with members who feel concerned that their voices have been muted by those whose voices are dominant. And at the end of the day, I have to acknowledge and be sensitive to the fact that I am going for reelection in 2026, and I don't want my personal feelings to be considered because there are things that are easier for me or not. I also have to understand that a couple of, or at least one, if not two, are running or thinking of running, and so these are all the variables that I have to think about. During my campaign, I was very, very transparent about how I felt about things so that if I was elected, I could move forward at a very quick pace and with the confidence that I needed. When it came to runoffs, I had the same stance then that I have now, which is I can see both sides. I can understand the argument for and against. So when I measure all these variables, I'm left with, what is the best for most? Do I prioritize the voice of six over the voice of thousands? The answer is no. And I understand that there was this preemptiveness, but we are on a deadline. We need to progress. This needed to be dealt with in terms of staffing and deadlines quickly, and I did not foresee the vote to be taken again. And I understand that there's a deadline, that all these things have to be accomplished, and I was not willing to postpone it to 2028 to have a written recommendation. Again, I apologize for the feeling of dismissiveness, but sometimes you just have to be bold to get things done. And at the end of the day, like I said, I cannot ignore the voice of thousands over the voice of six.
Thank you, Ms. Roberton.
You know, Lena had very eloquently stated my position as well. I'm not going to repeat it. But I can tell, I can tell you this, I was on the 2015 Charter Review Committee, and we brought a bunch of things to council, and they didn't really accept any of it. So I think when you come to a Charter Review Committee, you've got to know that everything you come up with, whether it's a majority vote or not, it's an advisory to the council, and we'll listen to it, but we don't always do agree, just like when people come up and they talk, there's some things I agree with and some things I don't. Heck, I was on the Business Task Force for two and a half years and brought 78 things to council that they thought were, we thought were very important things for the entire city to change. And we had a big committee there of all kinds of people, from neighborhood people, business people. It was a great cross-section of Clearwater people, and the council only took a few of those. So, I mean, that's part of being an advisory committee to council. You're not always going to get everything that you come with. But to me, this was a very simple decision. You know, back 10 years ago, we didn't have a lot of people running for council or mayor. We were, I mean, a lot of people walked into office. They didn't even have opposition. They just came in and, you know, unelected really by the majority of people. If you don't have an opponent, you walk into office. Now we have, as stated before, we've got a lot of people in every race. And I can tell you the reason is because now things are happening here in Clearwater. We're making things happen, and everybody wants to be part of that. They see Clearwater as really starting to move. And so to me, it's very important that if we have so many people, if you get five people in a race, for, take any seat, mayor, seat two, seat three, you're not going to get a 50% vote on anybody. And I think it's important to have a 50% vote, the majority of the people to elect somebody to this position in Clearwater. So I think a runoff satisfies that. You get the top two, and they runoff, and the person that, in a runoff race with two, somebody's going to get more than 50%, so it's done. To me, it's an easy choice. It's clear as day. I'm sorry that the Charter Review, you know, they, they didn't agree with that, but, you know, it wasn't a unanimous decision with them. There were people that disagreed as well. So I'm pretty firm in that. I don't have any wiggle room on there. I'm not running again for council. I'm not trying to satisfy, you know, a specific group of people. I just think it's the right thing for Clearwater right now. So I'm sticking with, and you know what? It's not even my decision. We're putting it out to the people of Clearwater. We're making a referendum out of it. Let the whole people in Clearwater decide whether they want it or not, and that'll happen, you know, next March in that election. So I think always throwing it out to the people to, you know, get a vote on it is always a safe thing to do.
Vice Mayor, do you have anything? Mr. Barker, do you have anything?
No, just to say that I certainly understand the feelings of the people on the advisory board who are, you know, looking at all these issues and then feeling that they're being ignored, and that's not the intent. We have people who come up here to speak on different items. We're hearing you. We are, you know, we want to make the city better. We want to help. That's what we're here for. And unfortunately, all those recommendations made by Charter Reviews in the past, you know, some of those have just been frittered away, and nothing's been done. But we, we are hearing you, and we appreciate the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
So I appreciate a little more feedback about your rationale. I would say, you know, Councilmember Tusheda, you prioritize, you don't want to prioritize the voice of six over voice of thousands. I have not heard any of the thousands that you might be talking about. Again, I don't think we have any evidence here of people that are calling for this particular referendum on the ballot. I think three of you have made a decision to put it on the ballot based on no input from residents and not waiting for input from the charter. I also think it's disingenuous when you didn't even ask the charter to investigate a runoff form of election and ask them to discuss that specifically and make a recommendation. And, you know, to, to jump over waiting for their recommendation is just not, not being respectful to the charter. And I get that we don't have to take the recommendations of a charter, but my gosh, can we wait and at least listen to the recommendations of the charter before we move forward? And then, you know, the other thing I think is, you know, is I think, you know, when you say being, it's a, it's a very simple decision for you to put it on, on a ballot and give that, that direction, it's simple because it's only about what you believe. It's not about what our residents have weighed in on, and, and I just, I find it incredibly disappointing. And I think when we didn't even have a presentation of facts, that we have more of a turnout in March than we do in an August primary, that it is incredibly expensive to run in a runoff form of an election. And I think when we've had discussions about here, up here, about having more diverse representation in multiple ways, that the fact that we would switch to a runoff form of election would not lead to an easier path to get on the council or a less expensive path. You know, I think the argument that if they're a good candidate, they're just automatically going to get $100,000 doesn't weigh out with facts. I mean, it's really hard work to raise money. It's a full-time job. You know, a lot of people who raise that amount of money have, you know, PACs from out of state, or not out of state, but out of Clearwater that help them out. But I just, I just think it's, I just, I just think if we're not going to wait for recommendations from the Charter Review, we might as well not even, you know, why are we putting weight and having our staff time and, and the charter members even go through seven months of deliberation and discussions if we don't even wait for a presentation from them to move forward on something?
So once again, I'm going to rise above it. I'm going to disagree with you without calling your integrity into question. I'm not being disingenuous. I will take full responsibility for my next comment. I have had many discussions over many years about runoffs, and you need to accept that as a fact, and don't question it. We have a disagreement of opinion, that's fine. Let's not get personal. Two out of, two out of five of us had exercised our right to disagree with some recommendations already. They recommended for a salary increase for the city council. You exercised your right to vote down. I never called you disingenuous, never attacked you for that. I respected your opinion. I would say, how can it be wrong to ask the voters how they choose their leaders? That's a simple question, and I can't in good conscience tell somebody who told me just this morning, I need to have confidence in my leadership. I need a clear confidence in my leaders, and I need to see support, and it's not 1% or 2% or 3%, and I want a runoff. How do you explain that? And I couldn't. And so what I'm saying is, I understand both sides. Well, what are you afraid of? What are we afraid of? Let the voters decide how they select their leaders. And let's make this pretty clear here. Runoffs are going to be harder for me. In 2026, a runoff gives me hives. To think that I'm going to extend that process a few more months and have to budget for possibly two campaigns, that is something that is much more difficult for me. But I'm not here talking as a candidate. I am here talking as a person who was elected to be in this position, and I was unclear about my position in my campaign, and therefore I defer to the voters. I want to hear their voices, and if it proves that they don't want runoffs, I will be respectful of that decision, and I will not deny that I, that I was, that I was wrong. But to say that I, you know, we're going to wait for these, all these procedures for something that, as important as this, they might not have spoken to you, but they spoke to me, and don't say that that's not true.
I didn't say it's not true. I said I didn't hear it. I didn't hear from thousands of people.
You implied that, I never said thousands.
Yes, you did. You said, you know, you said...
I've heard, I said there's conversations about thousands of people in, in terms of the campaign. For example, and I'll give you a very clear example when I mean thousands. When I ran, I knocked on 6,700 homes. The last election was one of the big topics, how many people were running in one race, and, you know, how I came third, and, and how we all were divided by hundreds, and that was a real discussion for me because it was my reality. So when I knocked on that door, that was a discussion because that was my second time running, and I lost by a few hundred, and it was between one, two, and three, I think one and two is a difference of 200. So it might not be for you, but that's my reality. That was... That was, that was important to me. That was important to the people I knocked, because it affected me. And so I'm just frustrated that we can't have a disagreement up here without making it personal.
I didn't, I'm not making it personal, I'm just saying...
Disingenuous? Being called disingenuous is a polite way of saying lying.
Well, I think we're disingenuous by not honoring the charter review process and waiting for the recommendation. That's the part that's disingenuous.
It depends on your definition of process. All right, I'm going to speak when everyone's done, because if I didn't have thick skin, unlike one of our gadflies that comes up and calls me thin-skinned, I'd be totally offended by this. I've been through numerous charter review processes, as a mayor, as my son chairing. Why didn't this charter review invite us as council to go to their meetings like they did when Mr. Johnson was on the council? He got invited by that 2015 group to talk about what was important to them. Why isn't this charter review committee sunsetting in August, so there's plenty of time, like previous ones did? Those are my questions. Mr. Margolis, when I spoke to you about this, and I've told you, numerous people have talked to me about this over the years, you told me I had to get this forward now so the ballot questions could be written and get it going, and we couldn't wait any further. And did you not also tell me, in sitting in the charter review committee, that they talked about this, and they basically pushed it aside and said they were not interested in runoffs?
I believe there's two issues. You know, one of them is the substantive question over what the charter review committee has voted on, and the second is our timing question of how to get things on the ballot. So as far as the substance, the clerk has attached some of the motions that were made, some of the motions that failed. And certainly in this particular instance, as far as the runoff elections and as well as the timing of the elections, I mean, it is clear from the minutes, and of course, I was there, and so was the clerk, that the charter review committee did consider the possibility of changing the election dates. That motion ultimately failed four to five. They considered the possibility of creating a runoff system, which they are, which is described in the minutes as the current voting system. And then they made a motion to keep that voting system in place, which is a plurality, election process six to four. So the committee has weighed in, or at least those members who attended, weighed in on it. I do not believe there is a lot of value in either sending it back to the committee or having them reconsider, and that's because, in part, they've already done it, but it's also because of the timing, and it flows into the timing question. So the clerk may be able to elaborate on this further, because it does vary a little bit from county to county. But my experience generally is that most supervisors of elections are looking for 120 days, give or take, in advance of an election to actually get the ballot language. Now, that can depend on county to county. It can also depend a little bit on whether our ballot question is in conjunction with anything else, whether they're already holding an election at time, whether it's a special election, is anyone else holding an election, et cetera. But let's just say for general terms, if the supervisor is looking for 120 days, ballpark figure. Our next election is in the middle of March. So if we were to back that up, 120 days from March, it doesn't give much time, especially because we have to back it up further, because an ordinance to put something on the ballot requires two readings and advertising. So when we actually work backwards chronologically, even though our elections may feel like they're far away, the truth is, there is very little time. And so that's in fact why the charter review has to wrap up their work right around this time of year, otherwise there's really no opportunity. Theoretically, there's just a little bit of play in terms of, you know, for example, if the charter review committee makes a recommendation at their next meeting, and it's one that the council is interested in, do I believe that there's enough time for the council to consider that and put it on the ballot for March? Maybe if it's a recommendation that's simple, if it's one the council's in agreement on, if there's no changes, and if we do it right away, maybe. But I would agree with the mayor that we're pretty much at that time now where we really need to be honing in on exactly what's going to be on the ballot. And for this language in particular, on runoffs and moving the dates of elections, I know that this is a particularly complex surgical operation of the city charter. The explanation that I've given to some folks is it's kind of like doing open-heart surgery on the city charter, and so there's a lot of moving parts to make sure we don't nick an artery in there. So the reason I say that is because it also flows into the timing issue. I think that because this question involving runoffs and moving the dates of elections is more complex than some other topics, it also creates a longer lead time, because I need to make sure there's enough time for council to consider not only whether you're comfortable with runoffs, and not only whether you're comfortable with creating a system of August and November elections, but also how do you want it phrased? How is the ballot question phrased? When do terms in office begin? And when is the qualifying period? There are so many details associated with it, that as the mayor said, I did indicate that it is time. We have a very short runway now in order to get that on the ballot. We are on track to do that, if that is the council's will. But I don't believe there's a whole lot of play in there in order for us to make the March ballot successfully. Again, would defer to the clerk if she has a different perspective.
I would agree, yes, that's one of the reasons why the last charter committee, I did explain to them that they really needed to wrap up. The ballot language is due December 19th, but I also have to provide it to her already translated into Spanish. So there is some work, so I have it scheduled so that any ballot questions go to council in November with the last adopting date, the first meeting of December, in order for us to make that ballot deadline.
But Mr. Margolis, so you did, I mean, you're verifying that you did tell me that the timing that I brought forward was the timing that was necessary because of the complexities of this issue, if the council so desired to do it, correct?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Secondly, I fully understand what a charter review committee does. Again, I've been involved with them, family members have been involved with them, one's chairing the county's charter review committee right now. And that charter review committee invited every constitutional officer and every county commission to their meetings to get input on what they desired, and I wish that would have been done here. I never heard anything about that. Now, I did join late, so maybe that was just a miscommunication. I'll take it that it was. But I am not going to wait for a charter review recommendation that I know from the minutes that the attorney told me he's not coming forward, because it's not going, you know, why would I wait? It makes no sense. If I feel strongly, and I bring it up, and if you guys didn't want to do it, the rest of the council, then that's fine. But I've been told, just like Lena has over the years, Councilmember Tuchera, that it's time to do this. And I've talked to a lot of people since I brought it up. Maybe they don't run in Councilmember Beckman's world, I don't know, but I've certainly heard a lot, and people want to let the citizens decide. Let the citizens decide. It's not up to the charter review committee to decide. It's not up for us to decide. Put it on the ballot, make sure there's time to get it on the ballot properly, that it's worded properly, because it's very complex. And I've seen referendums fail in the past, because the ballot language on the ballot on the referendum was terrible, absolutely deplorable. And I was advised that this needed to come forward now, so we can tweak this and work on it, so that it's simple, it can be understood, even though it is very complex. That's why I brought this forward. So I feel sorry, I feel bad for the charter review committee. I appreciate all their time. I've heard the same thing as other people have, though, that some people dominate the conversation, other people maybe are afraid to speak up. Three members go to most of the meetings, and other people kind of miss here and there. Sometimes they have a hard time even getting a quorum. And so again, I'm not disparaging the process or the members of the committee, but there are some strong opinions on that committee, and I've heard that, and some of the strong opinions don't want a runoff. Okay, that's their opinion. I disagree, and I have a right to bring it up as the mayor of the city of Clearwater. For us to discuss, and if we have a majority that wants to put, move forward with it, and we have the time to get it on correctly, which was my goal, if the citizens vote it down, so be it. If they vote it in, so be it. It's going to be up to them. And a question like this is important to make sure you do it correctly and you get it on in time. So that's my statement, and anything else? All right, we done talking about that? Okay, let's move on to the city manager evaluation. Let's start with Councilmember Tuchera, we'll move up this way. We'll come up from her to Mr. Albert, and to Ms. Beckman, to the vice mayor.
Are we doing the city manager first? Or city attorney?
Yeah, I think the city manager's on you, Jen, first, is it not? Yes, yes, city manager's on first.
Okay. So I used the form given to me, so that we have something objective to look at, and I will submit it. Out of four, I gave 3.9. But I do want to take a minute to say that I'm very happy today about this, because I was confident you would perform well, and you proved it. And I understand that we, again, skipped a couple of steps and hired you without even doing a national search, but that's because we threw you in hot water, and you excelled. Through no fault of your own, you were faced with so many challenges, and you excelled. And to me, what you went through in a few months was equal to years. So tonight, I'm very proud of our decision. You were, you have been, you've excelled my expectations, and it was especially notable during that library leak, because I was a spectator, and I saw how you and your staff professionally, swiftly, calmly dealt with a challenge that had so many moving parts. Because it wasn't just a building that was in dire straits, you know, thousands of gallons of water, and the safety behind that, safety issues. It was a millage meeting that was supposed to happen within hours, and so you had conversations with the state and all that. And to me, that personified you. You were calm, you were professional, you were transparent, excellent communicator. I have every confidence in you. And my discussions with you, I enjoy, because even when we see things differently, I enjoy the way you explain your view. And there are times where I've changed my view, because you made sense. And your communication skills are incredible. I never feel like I'm going to read something in the Tampa Bay Times that you didn't tell me. I'm, I always feel that at any moment, I know what's going on in this city. And I also feel that you truly love this city, and I can tell. So thank you.
Okay, I'm happy to tell you that you passed my evaluation. I want to back up a little bit and say that when you were the interim city manager, and you dealt with the tree debacle that came first, and then the recycling debacle came second, and you didn't, you handled both of those with dignity and transparency, and I mean, I think you even called the paper and said, hey, this is what I found, I want to make this perfectly clear, and this is what we're going to, you know, solve this issue. I thought that was amazing. Now, I know when we talked about going for a national search, I was opposed to that, because we needed to have, after firing of the other city manager, we needed to get back on track really quick. And I saw how you handled pressure, even though you weren't, you didn't have a past as a city manager. You were familiar with the city of Clearwater and its employees. I mean, I spent a couple of years with you negotiating fire and police, so I knew you were tough, and you could make decisions easy. I liked that about you. I thought it was real important that we get a city manager immediately, and not go through another big search that would be six to eight months long, because we have an employee problem. I mean, you know, we needed to get somebody as the boss on board right away, so we could get people hired that would know that you were the boss, not, we don't know who's going to be the boss, but you know, come see us in eight months, and maybe we can tell you. And to me, you fit the bill perfectly. I'm so glad we went that direction and hired you as city manager. You've got a lot of energy, which I like. You listen well. Now, you know, I think each one of us had our run-ins with the past city manager. I had mine early on, and I think, I thought I got on his good side, where he was telling me things, but obviously he didn't really do it for the rest of them. But you, every week I talk to you, and you go over every issue that we have and make it very clear, you know, what's going on, and where we need to shore things up, or what we need to do, and it's very helpful. I used a, an evaluation form that has one through five, one being weak and five being strong. And I'll tell you the truth, it's a seven-page evaluation. I'm sure you want to go through this. I don't ever give fives, I can tell you that, because I think everybody, everybody can do better than they are doing. But I did give you some fives on this, and in fact, at the end, for the overall rating, I had to make a 4.5. So I didn't give you a four, I didn't give you a five, but I gave you a pretty close. So, you know, I think you're doing everything the right way. I look forward to working with you in the next couple of years, as long as I'm here. I think you're doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Beckman.
Thank you. So I chose a different way to evaluate, Jennifer. I've talked before about annual measurable goals, and when you're evaluated as an employee, it's important to know how you're going to be evaluated for your annual review. And so, you know, when you start a position, it's like, okay, what are my expectations, and what are you looking for in the annual review? And in fact, that's something that actually our charter review has recommended, and so you can see that it's, this is an example of it kind of in action. And I made copies for you all, so you can take a look at it. But what I did was, when Jennifer was hired on February 23rd, she and I sat down for a goal-setting conference date. So it was like, okay, Jennifer, what are your goals here as a city manager? And she came up with three of them, and they're SMART goals. So they're specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and timely. And I think that's important, to have something that's measurable, and it's important that she knows what she's going to be evaluated on, and she comes up with those. And we agreed on them. And so her first goal was to review the organizational structure and fill key positions. And so she describes what it is, and then, as we got close to this time, you know, the end of our fiscal year, we had an evaluation date of September 30th, and so Jennifer then filled out some questions, like, did you meet this goal? Yes or no? And, you know, what's your reflection on it? And so this is, you know, all public record, and I can share a copy with you all, too. But she certainly met her first goal of, it was to review the organizational structure and fill key positions. And I thought I'd just read a couple of my comments related to that one. So I just said, I agree with your decisions in restructuring the organizational chart, particularly keeping the neighborhoods division close to your office. It is key for the city manager to have a constant pulse on what is going on throughout our city. The neighborhoods division can enhance your eyes and ears. I also agree with the decision to combine general services and innovation. What great opportunities for efficiencies and savings lie ahead for the city by combining these two departments? I look forward to impressive annual reports on progress made. And as I write this, I'm happy to report that you recently announced the appointment of Michael McDonald to the position of Marine and Aviation Director. I'm confident he will do well in this position. So you have successfully filled five department director positions. The two that are unfilled were vacated after you set this goal. With our challenging recruitment and retention environment here in Florida, I understand that it is nearly impossible to have all major key position filled at all times. Finally, I appreciate the phrasing in your goal reflection, that there are, quote, "updated expectations." I know that you demand quality, work, transparency, and results, and so that goal was met. Her second goal was implementation of the strategic plan, and this was phenomenal. This is one that I'm most proud of for the city, and, you know, she, Jennifer goes through and reflects on, was this goal met? And it certainly was. Some of my, you know, a couple of comments related to this was, I also appreciate that you will require identification of strategic plan objectives for each agenda item. This will demonstrate that each department is keenly aware of the strategic plan, and will assure taxpayers and residents that we are committed to good governance. We set priorities, fund those priorities, report on progress, and justify any changes. I think you have done an excellent job in creating the strategic plan and utilizing it as a foundation of expectations and good governance. I look forward to collaborating with you, and perhaps our budget and finance directors, to develop a, quote, "one-pager" on how best to advocate for funding allocations, including both a timeline... both a timeline and necessary evidence. And I see that, you know, Jennifer has a strategic plan meeting scheduled for January. So hopefully that can be a time that we can give guidance on what are the priorities going to be for next year? And they very well might be carryover from this year. And then she can set her goals then related to those directions we give her. And then she'll know what she's going to be measured on and evaluated on in October. And then her third goal was, so she chose three. Provide direction and leadership focused on transparency and accountability with a focus on communications and becoming a premier employer and community. And again, SMART goals, she's got, articulates what's specific, what's measurable, what's achievable, relevant, and timely. And then she has a reflection on, was this goal met? And some of my comments, again, for that one, is that I'm incredibly pleased with your commitment to publicly facing dashboards for our departments and to engaging the public for input on what they would like to see on those dashboards. This is a hallmark of good governance and I'm proud Clearwater is leading the way in our region. And then I have, I appreciate the resources needed to develop and maintain well-functioning dashboards. Ideally, they will be primarily self-populating. Ideally is key. I think realistically, it may take more people power to maintain dashboards, but I believe if they are comprehensive and easy to understand, the public will both appreciate and utilize them. I understand that it takes time to roll those out, but I think it's important to have a schedule and do our best to meet those timelines. I understand the pay and classification study is near completion. For me, it's important to have all relevant and updated data to make any necessary pay adjustments. I see my position as an elected official as oversight of the city budget and operational decisions, like ordinances, annexations, et cetera, to represent what residents care about, to ensure that our city has highly qualified, highly trained, and appropriately compensated staff to do the important work of running our city and providing services to our residents. I appreciate that you have commissioned this study and we will use it to evaluate employee contracts. Successful recruitment and retention are incredibly important to me. And finally, I congratulate you on your continued engagement with staff. You are approachable, professional, and collaborative. To my knowledge, staff is adjusting to your leadership style and is happy with the direction we are heading. It helps that you had a foundation of trust built that you can now utilize as our city manager. This is incredibly important to me and I believe it is paramount in any employee, employer relationship. So thank you for making communication and transparency a priority. And then my summary, so, so for each one of those, it was, you know, does not meet the goal, meets the goal, exceeds the goal, or significantly exceeds the goal. And I gave you an overall rating of exceeds for everything. And a lot of it has to do with doing those, you know, achieving your three goals that you set out to do. But in the midst of all of the other monumental things that were going on in the city, you know, coming off of firing a city manager, having an interim mayor, opening a premier park, all sorts of things that we've had to deal with. So I have as my summary here. In the three and a half years I have served on the council, I've worked with three different city managers. You are by far the one most committed to transparency and accountability and to utilizing the power of a well-developed strategic plan. I think this will be a cornerstone of your success as Clearwater City Manager. You have demonstrated a strong commitment to Clearwater and to achieving the goals you set for yourself earlier this year. It has been such a pleasure to work with you, to get to know you better, and to provide input on those, quote, "updated expectations" as the city continues to move forward. There is a great deal of positive energy and momentum here in Clearwater. And I'm glad you're at the helm as we continue to improve on and celebrate the progress we are making. I think meeting your goals in the face of these demands, challenges earns you an exceeds. Hopefully, the list of highly unusual events, meaning not in a normal year, will be far shorter next year. So it is an absolute pleasure working with you. And I'm confident of your leadership and look forward to a productive and successful 23-24 year.
Thank you. Very well done. Mr. Vice Mayor.
I have to agree with Councilmember Beckman. I think you've done a terrific job. There was a tradition for a couple of decades of city manager Bill Horn and city attorney Pam Aiken going out for breakfast every week to discuss the issues going on in the city. And it was a good chance for them to, to bond and, and take care of business while getting to know one another. I also know that when I sit down with David Margolis, no matter how intricate the issues that we discuss, we always find a little time to laugh. So for Jennifer to be going out to lunch with David, coming back to City Hall and laughing on the way, well, thank God. David and I have never held hands and I have a hunch that neither of you two. So with all due respect to Mr. Haluba, that was a little unfair. I do think, you've had an enormous challenge stepping into this role in a period that I'm sure seemed to a lot of people incredibly chaotic with the loss of one mayor suddenly and another mayor stepping in and big challenges all along the way. But it never felt chaotic to me, at least. We have moved forward, I think, without really missing a beat. We're continuing to do the big things we set out to do. We've got the park open, we, you know, we, we finally have made a decision on a city hall that's going to be responsible and within budget. And I'm happy with, with the way things are going. You hit the ground running. You've been focused and detail-oriented and I've mentioned this before, but from the very first meeting, when we got together, I was impressed by how organized, how detailed, how passionate you were about doing the job right. And at the end of the meeting, all I could say was, best city manager meeting ever. And you've kept that up. Week after week, you have, you are prepared to, to prepare each of us for everything that's coming to us. And I've always felt that you have been open and honest and not hidden some things from us, as has happened with a previous city manager. So I appreciate that. You give us phone calls the very second anything happens in the city that we should know about, including things like, you know, we should never have to face, like kids getting stabbed in schools. I mean, this is, you know, amazing that, the things that, that happen constantly that, that you have to face, you have to do something about. The music, the library is flooded? Who saw that coming? And every day, you've got new challenges that suddenly spring up like that. You have kept your cool, you've gone about getting everything accomplished. You and the, and the city staff leap into action and handle whatever is thrown at you. So without, as far as I can tell, without ever losing your cool. Of course, my office is a little ways away from yours, so I may not be able to hear everything, but, you know, there's plenty of challenges ahead of us and plenty of surprises, I'm sure, but I'm sure you're up to each and every one of them.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I will start with that, yes, I am very sorry you had to listen to that utter garbage earlier for a happily married mother and attorney also. That stuff will not be tolerated going forward, even if it's at the end of discussion. So my apologies. My apologies for you having to deal with me for 11 months. I know it was a little different, a culture shock, but I appreciate, and I, you know, I kind of think I take a page out of what Mayor Hibbert used to do. We talk as we go along. When we have an issue or we, I see something that may be, hey, take a look at this, we talk. And I like that style and I like how flexible you are and how available you are, because sometimes I can text you four or five times a day. I try not to anymore on the weekends, but, but as the Vice Mayor said, it's great to get the immediate communications from you. That's what I was used to. I appreciate that still coming. The only thing I haven't gotten a text on is that there's a plane that just landed on Drew Street. So hopefully that doesn't happen during this tenure. But the other stuff we've had to deal with, there's been, you know, some pretty dramatic stuff. You know, we talk about employee retention, employee attraction, and you know, that's going to be a major challenge going forward. We heard some things this evening. I understand there's always at least three sides to every story. So I want to find out more about what some people were talking about this evening. I know we'll get to the bottom of that in some of the comments. But those are the kind of things we've talked about that we need to continue concentrating on. Interdepartmental communication, especially when the departments have to discuss with each other what's going to happen when somebody puts in something that needs to be approved, just those types of things. And I think you've got a great start on that. I think your temperament is perfect for this job. I am so happy that this council had the wisdom not to go out for a national search and give you an opportunity to show your stuff and saw in a quick order that you could do the job. And they were 100% right. And I'm very happy that that happened. As far as grade, I would say maybe you had up a five scale, a 4.5, because, you know, there's always a little bit of room, but I think you've exceeded expectations. You've been extremely intelligent with your thought process and you've been extremely transparent, which is good. I think overall, from what I've seen, the employees like you and they like your style. And I think that's just going to get better and we've got that big challenge coming forward. So I would just say, keep up the great work and I'm proud to be able to sit here and serve with you. Okay. All right, let's go to the attorney. We'll start this time, let's start down the end again and just go back up. Okay? Yes.
So like the city manager, I use the objective form and I'm going to be using that the same, the same forms next year, so at least now you know in black and white what my expectations are, or at least what you're being evaluated on. Of course, you scored very high as well and I will submit it to you. We've had our 101s, so what I'm about to say is not a shock. But I do want to have, say on record, that you continue to be my greatest resource. And I love the fact that you're so methodical because it clears my mind and it's easy for me to understand concepts that I'm usually not used to dealing with. You offer me a very safe space to articulate and bounce back ideas and try to navigate through concepts that are new to me. And you're very accessible. And I try to do as much of my research during the week, but sometimes it doesn't work. So most of my deep in the weeds work is on Sundays. And I appreciate the fact that when I do call you on Sundays because I need clarification of something, you don't take advantage of my Catholic guilt to make me feel bad. Your demeanor is always great, yes, councilwoman, how can I help you? It's never like, what? You know what I mean? Because I do realize it's a Sunday. But I do want to come prepared on Monday and eliminate questions that are frivolous. So sometimes I do call you on Sundays for clarification. I appreciate you as a resource. I think you're very professional, very knowledgeable. I feel that you've got the greatest, greatest loyalty to the city. I feel like you're always thinking of what's best for the city and for the staff and protecting And I enjoy working with you and I also enjoy having comical conversations with you. You and I share some of our humor. Sometimes we share them. So, thank you and I appreciate your work.
Ms. Alberton.
So I use the SAMP 46 Performance Evaluation and Planning Form to give you your evaluation. And just wanted to say a few things about key objectives. I really like the way that you run the legal department. One of the things you did that wasn't done before, where there were a lot of attorneys and all our different departments had some form of legal, and you took them out of all that departments and ran them through your department so you can keep track of everybody. Plus, it makes it better when you're looking at the budget, how much you're spending. And by the way, I, this, this year's budget, I appreciate the savings that you gave us. So thank you very much. You've been very busy, though. I can tell you that, wow, we've had a lot of contract negotiations this past year between Ruth Eckert Hall, the Bluff referendum, Gotham. You know, we had the new city manager that you brought in. We had to fire the old city manager. We had a mayor that got up and left and, I mean, you were like, you handled a lot of things and you handled them well. You know, I get, sometimes I get feedback from people on the other side that think that you, you're not fair, that, you know. Look, my dad was an attorney and I know when I used to hear that, it was like, you're doing a good job, Dad, you know? Because one thing I can say about you, David, is that I really do think, and I'm not just saying this, I think when you do negotiations, the number one thing you have in mind is the benefit of the city. That's it. And everything that you've, you've been put through this last year, I really feel that has come through the strongest. Because every time, it's always like, this is going to be the best way for the city. And, you know, I, I know it doesn't make a lot of people happy out there that are on the other end of the negotiations, but thank you for being there and doing that because I think that's very, that's one of your strong points. Now, one of the things that we're going through now is the Philly negotiations. That's a big one because we've had a 25-year history with them. I'm sorry, it's longer than that. But we're, I think we bumped it up to another 30 years now. And that's real important to me, at least. So I'm glad we have you on our side and we're looking at all the details on that. You know, you also spend a lot of extra hours doing things like the Charter Review Committee. You know, you're not just a nine-to-fiver. I mean, you're there, as has been said here, you're there all the time. I got a question, I can pick the phone up and you answer, which is, to me, it's great. I gave you, I gave you a, a good rating here on all, on all of this. Exceeds expectations on just about everything. I like that I can, you're easy to talk to. I can talk to you, you make sense. You and Jennifer are very organized when we have our 101s. You have something written down on a paper. You're not just there, you know. I, I used to get put off with, I'm not going to name names, but before you, that, you know, they'd say, well, what did we talk about last week? No, you have it right there and you go down the line. I like that because if something wasn't resolved, we'll hit it again until it does. So, thank you very much. I like that you gave us a sheet of what, kind of a reminder of what you went through this year and then a reminder of what you're going to be looking at going through next year. That, that's good. I almost hate to ask somebody that, but Johnny on the spot, you gave it to us without really asking. So thank you for that. So basically, just to keep it short, I'm going to give my written evaluation to Rose, but exceeded my expectations. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Beckman.
Sure, thank you. So I have the same kind of format that I had with our city manager. So David and I met earlier and he proposed three SMART goals, measurable goals, and then I evaluated him on those and there were some reflections. So he met every single one of them. The first goal was migrate our case document management system to a superior tool that aligns with the city's IT strategy. It gets into the weeds, all of his specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and timely details, but he did meet this goal. And one of my comments was, I appreciate that this initiative allows employees remote access and provides better reporting tools. So I'm interested to learn more about the features the system has, including the dashboard. So that first goal was met. I was going to say easily met, but I'm, I have no idea how difficult it was. Goal number two, successfully close on strategic real estate transactions for which we are currently under contract. And so a couple of things, you know, that was mentioned, David mentioned was the Peace Memorial and PSTA for important land acquisitions. And this is interesting to, you know, to look at when people set annual measurable goals, you know, it's, it's their intention to meet those, certainly. And, you know, was this goal met? Well, not completely because we're still in negotiations with PSTA. There are some little bumps along the road that we're dealing with. But that's okay. It doesn't mean that it wasn't, you know, a valuable goal or that he wouldn't get a strong rating on, though this was not completely met. I, well, first I said, I'm proud that the city and especially you and your legal department on behalf of the CRA works on behalf of the CRA work so collaboratively with Peace Memorial, and that the contract with Peace Memorial is in place, allowing the city to purchase part of their property to construct a parking garage behind their church, and also that the purchase agreement states that 125 spaces are reserved for that church on Sunday mornings. Unfortunately, though, the city has not yet closed on the PSTA contract, and I am aware of the challenges we are encountering with closing this contract, and I appreciate that you're keeping me informed of staff's concerns. I have communicated with PSTA leadership about those concerns and will do all I can to protect the quality of life and safety of Clearwater residents, including maximizing efficiency and traffic flow near the proposed PSTA multimodal site. So was this goal completely met? No. However, I don't fault you or the legal department. The PSTA contract has not been closed because there are significant concerns yet to be resolved, hopefully by changes in design from PSTA. So certainly not a reflection on Mr. Margolis or his management. And goal number three was to hire a new attorney and realign attorney assignments to the extent needed, and he goes into detail about how he accomplished that goal. And just one of my comments for that one was that it's a fantastic overview of the success of setting and achieving this goal. I'm glad that you are not only addressing staffing needs, but he has a keen eye for continuous development of his staff, and this goal was fully met. I also asked him, how do these goals relate to the city's strategic plan? And he went through that articulation. I asked if he had any internal-facing goals, and he talked about a few of those. He also, like he must have done for you all, he provide, you know, some context about other accomplishments or successes from the past year that you feel reflects your performance and abilities. Certainly, that referendum was huge. Also, continuing to work with Gotham is huge. Fly USA was another one. Navigating, you know, acclamation to a new city manager, letting go of a city manager, impact fee revisions, decorum rules, there's a whole bunch of things that, in light of this year of so much going on in conjunction with upheaval, I gave David a rating of significantly exceeds. And so a couple of mine, my comments related to David and his interaction with me are real similar to yours, the ones that have been mentioned, but it is an absolute pleasure to meet with you each week, David, to discuss the work of the council and receive updates on legal matters pertaining to the city. I learn something new nearly every meeting. Thank you for your expertise, your tact, and your professionalism. You always have, protecting the city and doing what's best front and center. I appreciate you listing the other accomplishments, because they are significant and impressive. And additionally, I know how hard you worked on the referendum. You have every right to be proud of getting that on the ballot. I'm confident you will do just as well, guiding us through discussions related to any changes in that development agreement. You certainly set the bar high on what it means to be an exceptional city attorney. I know the city is in good hands with you leading our legal department, and I look forward to another productive year. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I didn't fill out a form. I don't have any charts and graphs, but I have to admit that I think I would agree with Councilmember, Councilmember Beckman's check of significantly exceeded. That was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're great. I have nothing but the highest praise for you, and I believe you've done a great job running the department. You came in with an already strong team here, and you've found some great attorneys who fill in special niches that we needed, and I like the way you manage the team and reward performance. Some of the challenges that we faced have been pretty enormous, and you have worked hard on the Bluff properties, dealing with Gotham, working through issues with Ruth Eckert and the amphitheater, and including the ongoing issue of naming rights of the amphitheater and other places around the park in the city. Big tasks, all of them you're juggling well. And a lot of this was further complicated by decisions made by our last city manager, who I will admit kept us in the dark too often. I appreciate the work personally that you did to craft a buffer zone to help the patients and employees at Bread and Roses Clinic. That still allows voices of protest to be heard, but in a much safer environment for everyone. And you very wisely chose Luke LaRoe as outside attorney to represent the city. I've known him for, it's well since 2000, and he is the top First Amendment attorney in the area, so good choice. And, you know, I appreciate the fact that he even put in to writing all your accomplishments for the past year and what you're going to do in the next year. Very detailed, and I appreciate it. And on top of that, you're a generally nice guy, and you're a treat to sit down with for an hour every week as we discuss what lies ahead, and you patiently answer the questions of guys like me who have never even watched an episode of Law and Order. There's one other, one other important factor here. Pam and you, two Trekkies in a row. That's, that's pretty amazing, two Star Trek fans in the city attorney's office. So I appreciate that fact as well, and I will see you at the next meeting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I went through the accomplishments, the fiscal year review that you gave me, which was awesome. I would agree with what everyone said, and especially navigating the tricky appointment of me with through my son, and I think tonight was a good testament to that. First time probably it's been other than some consent agenda I just saw my mouth on, so great job there, great job with everything, and, you know, you've got a good aggressive list for next year, and getting to the end of the Gotham project, getting the Phillies' deal done, PSTA Land Exchange, some little boat ramp, a lot of stuff. Your style's a little different than I was used to, so I appreciate you kind of bearing with me and reminding me why we do things and why we don't do things and how we do things, and I think, and, you know, we share, like someone said, we share a laugh, and I usually try to start with something that, you know, calling you lefty or whatever goes to your shoulder or something, anyway. But no, I think overall you've done a terrific job. I know you were disappointed in not being able to go home for a position, but we are very happy that you're still here. We hope that you stay here for quite a while, and I just, you know, appreciate your style and the fact that you are available, because as you know, I can call or text out of the blue three or four times a day or not hear from me for a week, depending on what's going on, and you always get back to me, and we talk about things, and we talk about what the overall picture of everything is, what the ramifications might be with certain situations, especially my personal situation. And I, you know, I'm always very cognizant of that, and so are you, and I think that's done very well, so I appreciate that very much. I would just say, keep up the great work. I would also give you a 4.5, because I'm not playing, I'm not being a teacher's favorite here, you know, I think you both do a great job, and I think we're very fortunate to have both of you, so thank you very much and keep up the great work. Okay, let's, closing comments. Let's start down with Councilmember Tashara.
I want to wish everyone a good night. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Albrecht.
Well, I wanted to talk about Pinellas Suncoast Transit Authority. I just have a couple of things that I was thinking about before the meeting that might be interesting, that I know that Brad sends out emails of things that happened there, but just bear with me on this. Starting as the St. Pete Municipal Transit System, SPMTS, in 1903, the Pinellas Suncoast Transit Authority has served as a premier public transit provider for Pinellas County, Florida's most densely populated county. The Sunrunner, Tampa Bay's first-ever Bus Rapid Transit, or BRT, service, provides a reliable car-free option from downtown St. Pete and St. Pete Beach. With 41 fixed route bus routes, two express routes to downtown Tampa, the Suncoast Beach Trolley, the Jolly Trolley, and the Looper, and the Paramount Service, Paratransit Service Access, PSA provides 9.4 million rides annually. PSTA also plans to give veterans free rides and lower costs to transportation disadvantaged customers. The Sunrunner has been free for almost a year. The fairs went into effect on October 1st. PST now has a cashless fare for customers called the Flamingo Fares, and you can use Flamingo app or card. This new system creates contact-free way to get on and off the bus. Rides with Flamingo Fare cards or the app just have to tap their card or scan the app as they board the PSTA bus. So they, you can go to flamingofares.com to register and get a card, download the Flamingo Fares app, and pay for fares. About half of PSTA's fleet is now electric or hybrid. This underscores PSTA's commitment to clean energy and sustainability in Pinellas County. Our electric buses now will be running in all parts of Pinellas County, Brad Miller, the CEO of PSTA, said. We are committed to sustainable choices that are environmentally responsible and fiscally stable. Our electric bus program will contribute to improved air quality for Pinellas County residents, and it will reduce the cost of operating our fleet. The Cross Bay Ferry would begin year-round service in Tampa Bay region. PSTA is currently looking at the potential for countywide ferry service beginning in Clearwater. The American Public Transportation Association has named PSTA as one of the best public transit agencies in the country. And since you brought up about the contract negotiations, Michael Delk and I are meeting with Brad Miller, the CER CEO, on October 18th to go over the plans and see if we can get this thing moving along a little faster. I did meet with him at the legislative meeting day before yesterday, and so I've got the plans with me, and maybe we can do a one-on-one before we go over there and talk to him. But real happy that I'm involved with PSTA. There's a lot of good things happening there, so thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you serving on that board on behalf. Councilmember Beckman.
Just want to wish everybody a nice evening and a good weekend. Just kind of feeling spent.
Vice Mayor.
The owner of Nash Key's Piano Bar, who spoke earlier during the comments to be heard, was quite upset about the lack of progress going through the red tape here, and he's got a valid point. We make it too difficult, and that was one thing that we wanted to address right from the beginning. Let's, let's take care of that, and we have not succeeded yet, so we have to keep trying. But I wanted to mention that I was watching a YouTube video last night on the Growing Up in Scientology channel, and there was an interview with a woman who, as a young Sea Org member, had been assigned to audit a man who did a lot of IT work around the world for Scientology. And an auditor is like a therapist, an unlicensed therapist, and they do talk therapy while the Scientologist is holding on to an E-meter, and they try to find things that are troubling. And boy, did she ever. This man admitted to her that when Scientology would send him to orgs around Europe to work on IT issues instead of checking into a hotel, he would stay with local families in their homes. And this man is talking in the therapy session about how he would molest the young children in these homes, as young, one of them at least supposedly the age of six, and he would videotape some of these allegedly. And this shook this Scientology auditor to the core, and to her credit, she went to management to report him, and management didn't seem to care. They wouldn't report him to the police, because that would cause bad PR for Scientology, and if this man was locked up, they wouldn't be helping him at all, but she, she could help him get better through auditing. Now, she didn't even want to be in the room with this guy, but Scientology insisted, and they wanted to make sure that she made him comfortable, because he was an important person to them. There's written policy in Scientology about not reporting crimes to the police. Now, is this the only religion that has not reported molesters? No. But it is the only one within a stone's throw from this building. And I just want to say, if you're watching at home, please do not go to the Scientology building and throw stones, because they won't report a molester, but they will definitely call the police to say that Mark Bunker is inciting a riot and putting all of us into terror, and they're all worried about, you know, the damage that's going to come to them. That is the way Scientology works. It's what they do to people like Leah Remini, who speak up to tell the truth about the Scientology organization. Protect the church, destroy the suppressive persons, the ESPs, and this should not be ignored, and I try to make sure it isn't. Thanks.
Thank you. So I'll try to keep this brief, but I did want to say, I had the opportunity to go to the National Night Out with the police and fire. It was awesome. Had my grandson, my sister's grandson with us, and everybody was so accommodating, got to climb all over the equipment, sit in the helicopter, hold the bazooka launcher or the, you know, the grenade launcher. It was pretty cool, so thank you very much to the police. Also, on a more serious note, I had an opportunity to speak to both parents of the victims at Countryside High School. I had Major Haley Illich, who translated for me with the Hispanic family. I spoke, and I waited a couple of weeks till the son that was, I think his name is Deegan, was, and I forgot the name, so I apologize, but he was removed from the hospital. He's in better shape, he's going to rehab. You know, he had some major injuries, and he's lucky, and they realize he's lucky, but the father was very appreciative. We talked for almost a half hour, that we reached out and talked, and it ends up he lives right around the corner from me, so I'm going to have him over someday, you know, when they want to, but anyway, he went back to school, I believe, the other day, so that's a good sign, and we'll keep in touch with them, and I know we're going to honor the four students that came really quick to rescue both these victims before the next council meeting at PD at 3:00, so anyway. And tonight, good discussions. We're all on the same team. I hope everyone realizes, and I know you do, that, you know, maybe people get offended by certain things, but maybe they weren't meant that way, and that's the way I take it, and, you know, make my point. Everyone makes their point, and we move forward, we come to consensus, and we move forward as a collegial body, and that's what we need to keep doing. So good meeting tonight, and we'll see you all next time. We're adjourned.